This meeting. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for November sixteenth, two thousand and eleven. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items imperied on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, looks something like this, and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Anytime will be fine before the item comes up. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should speak, state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. While the Planning Commission is in session, all intendents are expected to maintain order and decorum, of course, and to obey the orders of the Chair. Rule call.
Luckman?
Here.
Crabtree?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Merk?
Here.
Nicklin?
Here.
Troy, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As mentioned earlier, now is the time for public communications. And it is this time that is again set aside during the Planning Commission for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on matters other than what are on tonight's agenda. I do have one green card here, but it is regard to tonight's agenda, so we'll save that. Is there anyone in the... Well, I do have one from Scott Eichler.
Item two.
Item two, Scott? Okay. Oh, I see it now. Okay. So if there's anybody out there that would like to address the Planning Commission on any other matters pertaining to items other than what's on the agenda, I see no one coming forward, so we'll move forward. Consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved by rule call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered a separate item. The first item is minutes of our regular meeting of the Planning Commission from October nineteenth. I need a motion.
Comment, approve the minutes?
Aye, aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, rule call it? Sorry.
Luckman?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Are you abstained? Were you here last?
I was.
Okay. All righty.
Go ahead.
And Nicklin?
State.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. It's Todd Wilson here this evening from MAC. Todd is not here, so I'm going to assume there probably wasn't a meeting last. The next MAC meeting, however, is scheduled for November twenty-first. Commissioner Crabtree, you're still in line, so...
Yes, sir.
Hang in there. Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts for tonight's agenda items.
I've visited the sites.
I've visited both the Wheel Academy and the Mob Bicycle Shop site. I also had a call from John Lamar, representing the bicycle shop, and we discussed some elements of the project.
Great.
I've visited both the sites.
I have also visited both sites.
I've visited both sites, and I also received a call from John Lamar and discussed the project.
I've visited both sites. I'm familiar with both sites, and I've had a lot of work done on several different bikes at the bike shop over in Miners Oak, so I'm pretty familiar with the people there.
I've visited both sites.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're ready to begin our public hearing for tonight's agenda. The first item is a design review permit, DRP eleven dash zero nine, and conditional use permit, CUP eleven dash zero five, for site improvements and interior and exterior building renovations and landscaping for the conversion of a former gas station to a bicycle shop and green transportation center. I believe at this time we're going to hear from staff, which would be Abe Leeder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Good evening. This project is the bike shop project that you heard of a concept review earlier this year, and I'll mention that in my remarks. I'll give a review of the project and some of the issues that have come up in staff's review, and then go to a couple of items, a couple of issues that have come up since the staff report was published, maybe some minor changes to the conditions that we're recommending, and a couple of other questions that have come up. First of all, this is a squareish half-acre lot that's located at one-ten West Ojai Avenue. It's the northwest corner of Ojai Avenue and North Ventura Street. Right now, the property is mostly paved, and it's developed with a one thousand seven hundred fifty-one-square-foot commercial building that's unused right now, and it's right in the center of the lot, pretty much. The Oaks at Ojai Spa is across Ventura Street on one side, and the Ojai Valley Museum is to the west on the other side. The World University is adjacent to the north on Ventura Street, and across the street, across Ojai Avenue, is Star Market. This is a former gas station. It actually has some site contamination associated with the previous use, leaking fuel tanks. Those tanks have been removed, and remediation has happened on the site, but some groundwater monitoring and extraction wells are still in place there for continued monitoring. And County Environmental Health Division, they actually determined that the site is safe for this use, for commercial use, but they've asked that, prior to any construction activity, the department gets contacted, and they make sure that the wells remain both accessible and undamaged. In two thousand and eight, the Planning Commission approved a project to renovate the building, sort of like we see tonight, to allow for an unspecified new commercial use. Again, that was approved, but that project wasn't pursued, and the building remains pretty much as it was at that time, and has been vacant since. On August third this year, your commission considered this project as a concept review. The comments were generally supportive, both from the commission and the public. Most of the comments were about landscaping. There were some questions about tree removal, which we'll get to, the street front improvements along Ojai Avenue, and the site circulation and parking, and also the proposed use of shipping containers for storing some of the bikes in the rear of the property. Since then, the applicants made a few changes to landscaping, to the hardscaping, and especially to the circulation and the parking plan, so you see a different concept before you tonight than you did back then. Key elements of the proposed bike shop, the use and the improvements include retail bicycle sales and repair, bicycle rentals and tours, electric bike charging stations, electric car charging stations, do-it-yourself bike repair station, and an area for cyclists to rest and meet, and that has benches and tables and shade and a water fountain. Also, one feature is that in the front of the site along Ojai Avenue, they are proposing a no-car zone that would be bike and pedestrian-friendly to allow for access right off of Ojai Avenue for bikes and people walking in that wouldn't have car circulation coming in and out. And finally, a solar voltaic electrical generation and storage system. We'll talk a little bit more about that. That's actually proposed as a future phase, but we're looking at the whole project tonight. So the footprint of the existing building wouldn't change, but the facade would be updated with new windows and doors. This would eliminate the current arch configuration that sort of characterizes the facade. New stone veneer would skirt the facade below the windows, and the existing stucco would be covered with a more Mission-style stucco consistent with the treatment on the Oaks and on the museum. And the trim colors would be a dark brown, and I think the rendering shows that. I don't know if we have a specific material board. I don't think we do. The photovoltaic panels would be installed on top of a new covered workspace behind the building to the north. That's on the other side from Ojai Avenue. Again, this is an element of the project that the applicants don't propose to build right away with the opening of the shop, but rather it would be a future phase that would happen at a later time. There are a few trees on the site. There's some non-native palm and olive trees. There's an olive tree right on the corner that's sort of prominent, and there's one sycamore tree. That sycamore tree is located near the southwest corner of the structure. I think we spoke, talked about it at the concept review, and if you've visited the site, you noticed it. It's poking up through the asphalt right at the edge of the building. That's proposed to be removed, both to maximize the solar access for the future panels and also to avoid potential damage to the structure, and this is something that was brought up in an Arbor's report specific for that tree that the applicant had written by Michael Anaba. The landscape plan for the new project does include a thirty-six-inch box sycamore as a replacement. That would be near the northern boundary but visible from Ojai Avenue, and I think it would largely shade or provide shade around where the proposed meeting rest stop, sort of bike rest stop area is. Also, seventeen London plane trees and six other ornamental trees are proposed. Four of the London plane trees would be street trees within the sidewalk along Ojai Avenue. This is similar to the treatment in front of the museum. They'd be spaced at roughly thirty-five feet, and again, that's consistent with the pattern to the west. The existing olive tree on the corner would remain, as would pecan tree and some fruit trees. Other landscaping that's proposed includes vines for screening, various shrubs and ground covers, herbs, and flowers. The hardscape is a mix of different surfaces that would include asphalt, but also colored concrete, decomposed granite, and stone walkways. As I mentioned before, two eight-by-thirty-foot storage containers are proposed in the rear of the property, and this is because there really isn't enough room, according to the applicant, to store all the bikes they'd need for rentals and sales in the small building. This would be in the northwest part of the site, farthest from Ojai Avenue and Ventura Street, and the applicant is proposing to visually screen these containers from view with an eight-foot-high wooden fence in the back property, the back part of the property, so to screen them from Ventura Street, and a six-foot-high stucco wall in the front part that would screen those containers from Ojai Avenue. That wall would connect to the property line with the museum, and the applicant also is proposing to extend that existing low wall that goes around the museum farther back to connect to that. As far as circulation, cars would enter the site from Ventura Street from a thirty-foot-wide driveway. There's currently four driveways that really serve the site right now, but only one would be used, only two would be used along Ventura, one, I'm sorry, along Ventura Street, and the others would not be used at all. Eight parking spaces are proposed, and up to six car charging stations would be, electric car charging stations would be added to those spaces over time to match demand. The area in the front of the bike shop, again, would be a bike-safe no-car zone, and that would be accomplished with barrier-type posts preventing the cars that are coming in and out of the parking spaces from going that way. Two new, or I think one new bike pedestrian access path would connect to the shop from the sidewalk along Ojai Avenue, and also a new freestanding sign is conceptually proposed, but it's not part of this application, and Public Works has a condition for that, which I'll mention at the end. In general, staff reviewed the project and determined it's potentially consistent with the land use and zoning designations, which are commercial, and it would also further several city goals related to tourism and education and, excuse me, recreation and economic development. And generally, it would improve the look of the property over what it looks like now and provide streetfront amenities, and generally activate, which is what is pretty much a dead corner right now. Again, eight parking spaces are proposed, although sixteen spaces would ordinarily be required for the retail space based on square footage. As you know, the municipal code allows non-residential parking to be located off-site if the project is within five hundred feet of a parking, public parking lot, which it is. So staff recommends that this provision should be applied, may be applied in this case at your discretion, again, because it's within five hundred feet of the lot in Matilah and Signal Streets, and also because a lot of the customers would be expected to come on bike or on foot, or for rentals would walk from their lodging. There's one other zoning ordinance issue related to the rear setbacks. One of the proposed storage containers is shown on the plans, and part of the future roof structure for the covered work area and also the trash container storage area are shown within the fifteen-foot rear setback. And we've put a condition in the staff report, number nine, that requires that the site plan be revised to bring those features out of the setback and to comply with the code, and also that the proposed eight-foot fence step down to six feet, and that's also required by code in the rear setback. So those are the basics. That's the overview of the project, and I just want to mention a few changes to the conditions of approval that we're recommending. One is for condition number eight. This is the condition that allows, after the lighting is installed, it allows the community development director thirty days to go look at the lighting or to be on the lookout for any complaints or comments, and if the lighting isn't as envisioned in the approval or as specified in the plans, or it's just too bright, then it allows for adjustments to be made to the lighting to make it consistent with the city goals for lighting. What we're recommending is that that period be extended to ninety days. That just gives the community and staff a little better, longer time, better chance to make sure the lights are consistent with how they should be. Condition number fourteen, well, I should just preface this by saying that the applicant wrote a letter to staff with some of their concerns about the conditions and about the process going forward, and in response, staff got together, the Public Works Director and the interim Community Development Director and staff got together and responded to some of those comments, and the next couple of things are from that response, a few adjustments to the conditions. Number one on that list is condition number fourteen, which discusses the need for a grading permit. It's a fairly standard condition, but if the grading on that flat urban site is less than fifty cubic yards, it does not require a grading permit, and that's the case either way, but we thought it may give everybody a higher comfort level if it, we just included that in the condition to say that the grading permit's only required if the grading would exceed fifty cubic yards. Public Works also had a couple of new conditions they suggested. One was that any proposed trees in the sidewalks should be at least three feet behind the existing sidewalks to tree trunk centerline and maintained by the owner. Another is that proposed signs shall conform to the Public Works' site distance requirement. This is just so that the sign that's proposed for the corner doesn't create an unsafe site blockage for people turning from Ventura Street. And finally, the Public Works wanted to give a little flexibility, I think, for the sidewalk improvements, so are suggesting that a new condition be added, saying that the existing curb cuts and driveway approaches not being used as driveways may be left as is for five years, but require a standard sidewalk curb and gutter installation after that period at the expense of the applicant. The primary bicycle access on Ojai Avenue using the curb cut is exempt from this requirement. And if you don't have that in front of you, if you don't have the memo, I think you do have the memo from Public Works, so you have that text, that language in front of you. One more thing I wanted to bring up is about the fence on that would screen the storage containers from Ventura Street. So right now, that's proposed at eight feet, or at least is shown on the plans as at eight feet. The Planning Commission might want to consider an alternative to that eight-foot fence to screen those containers, just may consider that an eight-foot fence is a little bit imposing, especially a scene from people walking down the street aesthetically. So one option you may want to consider is to limit the fence to six feet, but require a simple aesthetic treatment for the top of the containers. It might be a partial trellis or some cladding at the top with some roof shingles or something like that, and we could add conditions to that effect if you're interested in going that route rather than approving the eight-foot fence. And that's the end of my comments.
Are there any questions for? Are there any questions for staff?
Couple of clarifications. Which was the eight-foot fence?
There's two, there's one stucco wall proposed that is on the north, near the north boundary of the property where it connects to the museum property, and there's one wooden fence that is basically parallel to Ventura Street, so it's on the northeastern part of the property. So it's the one that would, if you're walking down Ventura Street towards Ojai Avenue and you look to your right, it's intended to screen the storage containers from there.
That'd be where the gates are?
Yes, exactly.
Right. Okay.
What is the height on the storage container, Abe?
What is that? I don't know offhand. I think?
Eight feet?
Eight feet? These guys?
Thank you.
Another point of clarification on the Public Works Director's memo of November fifteenth.
Yeah.
A couple of these could be read that street trees are not required, and, you know, none of us were in on the conversation, but, for instance, number one says, "Any proposed tree shall be kept a minimum of three feet behind the existing sidewalk." See what I mean?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crabtree, I believe that the intent of that was to make sure there's clearance for parked cars, but McGlaughlin, do you have another?
Based on our understanding of what the Public Works Director was wanting for the street trees along Ojai Avenue, by the museum, they're out in the sidewalk adjacent to the curb at the street, and there's some concern about putting this-sized trees in the public sidewalk right in those locations. They'd like to see them at the backside of the sidewalk, closer to the parking area and closer to the Mob Shop site, which would be similar to what they did at the spa just across the street to the east. The trees, they did little ball bouts for the wall in front of the spa, and the street trees are in those locations. It pushes them back away from the street, so if somebody were to park, they could open a door, trees not in the way. So that's related to that, but I understand what you're saying. As far as all trees, this does have a little bit of a broader look, but that was my understanding with regard to the London plane trees along Ojai Avenue.
Thanks for the clarification. We'll be discussing that further, I'm sure.
I have a question for you, Abe. That, what looks like a planter as you enter that, the eight-foot proposed fence there, gateway, is that where the trash is located? Because I have a black rectangle, but there's no indicating as to what that is.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If you're looking at that shape that extends down into the work area back there, that is a planter. The proposed trash area is actually right up against the property line north of that, and it's more of a rectangle.
Yeah, okay, to the left there, I guess it would be westerly direction, northwest, that larger rectangle.
Yes. It's sort of, well, at least...
I mean, it seems like there's a, if I'm looking at, there's a tree in front of it.
There's a tree next to it, I believe.
Oh.
It's right adjacent to where the fence is proposed.
Oh, I see. Okay. So there's not, there's no footprint for it, but just a designated area for it at this point?
Mr. Chair, that's correct, but there are some water quality requirements for having it be paved and covered, but right now, there isn't.
And that's in the conditions, I take it, right? Okay.
I had a quick question, clarification as well. Under, or prior to the summary on public art, there's a paragraph there about two design-related conditions of approval on the previous project we looked at on that site. Can you explain what those two things are?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Becker, these are conditions that the Planning Commission put on last time, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'm not sure what precipitated these, but they're design-related, and I believe the skylight is something that, well, I might have to have the applicant tell you what the skylight situation is, but I'll tell you, I put them in there because the previous commission that looked at this saw a need for them, and I don't know which commissioners are still on the commission, but I thought I'd put it in there just to let you guys know.
I have a question, and this is regarding the curb cuts for the existing driveways. So just to be clear, on Ojai Avenue, both of those driveways are going to be closed off? I noticed there's a car stop pole on one, but I didn't see anything on the other one, so I was just, will there be something there, a bollard or something?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nolan, I don't, there's not one shown on the plan, but if there's no, you know, eventually there won't be a curb cut there, and so there won't be a need to stop.
Okay.
It shows a curb there, right?
Are you looking at?
This was the road going there?
Yeah, the southeast corner.
Well...
That was it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the one, the northern access, I'm sorry, the western access has a car stop pole because that, they're proposing to have a small curb cut there for bikes, but the eastern one that's closer to the corner would not have any kind of curb cut, bike or otherwise, so that's, I'm assuming that's why there's no need for a bollard there. Does that answer?
And they're just, the paving will just still remain. I could say, it was just a visual, that thing that I was looking at, so, okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Any further questions for staff? Abe, just to clarify, the amendment page that you gave us with the modified conditions, is that in context related to what you already have there in terms of numbering, that sort of thing, or is it? I'm trying to think of how to incorporate that into possible motion.
Mr. Chair, are you referring to the memo from Greg Grant with the additional, his additional?
Well, your comments, I guess, and how...
Mine are verbal only at this point, but we can, you know, restate them and make sure the intent is clear, whichever ones you want to bring in. At the end, I can say them again.
Okay, so we'll leave it at discussion at this point.
Yeah, apologies that I didn't give them to you on paper because...
Okay. Yeah, I saw the letterhead, and I thought that was, all right.
Again, these are, you know, these are his suggestions, and some of them are incorporated into the actual suggested changes to the conditions. Others are more advisory and just are things that are going to happen as the process goes forward with Public Works and with the building official. So some of these we think should go into the conditions. Others, the squimp stuff, we didn't think needed to be brought into the conditions or recommendations.
Okay. Great. Okay, if there aren't any more questions for staff, I think we should, could hear from the applicant at this time. Who's speaking for Mob? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kelly Pascoe, and I have my partners over here, Greg Roan and Greg Prins, and John Lamar has been, a lot of you know, I'm really instrumental in bringing this to fruition. There's a few people I want to thank. I mean, even though this is, you know, it's a little preliminary, but have been instrumental in getting us to this point is Glenn Hawks, Greg Grant, Carrie Miller, Sherry Herbach, Brian Meadows, Ann McGlaughlin, Rob Clark, and Amber. But we are really excited to be here at this juncture, this point tonight. I really feel this is no less than a monumental potential achievement for Ojai to turn this blighted property from a gas station to a green transportation center, and I don't want to belabor it. Abe really described everything that we're up to, and so we just hope that, you know, we can see the end at the light of the, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel. It's been a long process, and a lot of details that I feel like have been covered, and we really, I want to thank you guys for helping us to get to this point, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or?
Any questions for the applicant?
Kelly, I just want to make sure, in terms of these things along the north property line, moving the trash enclosure down and the storage units, you guys are okay with doing that, and you understand what needs to be done there?
Yeah, we do understand what needs to be done there. I mean, we are, we have a limited budget, and so when things like that start to add up, it does, you know, start to make the project a little more difficult. I mean, that's not a huge one, but if there's a lot of those conditions, it does make it, it makes it difficult. I mean, in this economy with this project, we don't have a huge budget, so I do understand what that entails.
Yeah, because it looks to me on the site plan like there's plenty of room to move the storage units closer together.
Right.
And then just if you just move that trash thing.
Right.
Like, instead of having the backboard against the property line, just have it on the curb there, I think you'd be okay.
Right, and not have a, not have a cover then.
Well, you still need a cover for it. I think that's a counter requirement, but...
Okay.
But just the location of it.
Right, the location of it.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Kelly. So we've, I'm sure you're familiar with all these conditions.
Yes.
I always like to ask the applicant and design review, were there conditions here that just made you cringe, or other than the ones that we just discussed? And if so, which ones would they have been?
Well, the biggest one was the sidewalk and curbs, which I think has been addressed, and we're happy that the five-year extension has been applied. Obviously, we're leasing the building, and, but, I mean, at this point, to get this project off the ground, we're happy with that five-year extension. John could maybe speak to some of the other conditions. He's been really instrumental in, Paul, remember that, you want to come on?
Yeah, the, some of the main conditions that were concerning was the cost relative to the curb, curb and gutter sidewalks. We started getting some cost estimates on that and looking at all the conditions and putting it all together, and the budget increase was twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, but you're satisfied with the change and the requirement on that?
Yeah, we're really happy with all the work that's been done in the last few days, to sort of work with us and take a look at that. And so, we're, we haven't adjusted the plan to that, obviously, because of the timing, but it seems like it could adjust and hopefully make everybody happy.
Great.
I think that's it, Kelly. Unless there's any further questions from the commission?
Hi.
I see none.
Hi, Paul, and thank you, the Planning Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll open up a public comment time. I have a few, or at least two speaker cards here, and I'm sure there's more of you that would like to speak. The first one is Steve Sprinkle.
Hello, I'm Steve Sprinkle, I live at 506 Lyon. I've been turning right off of Ventura Avenue to go down Ojai Avenue for the last eleven years, looking at that piece of property. And I'm very excited that this is going to be a potential solution to that, what we all can recognize as sitting there now. However, though, I'm somewhat compromised by it, because I was going to suggest that you should vote against this, because if you do, then Miners Oaks is going to lose one of the most vibrant and innovative businesses on El Roblar, and my friends are not going to be at my restaurant every day. But I've been watching them build this project on one of the tables in front of my restaurant for the last couple of months, and I'm very excited that they have this opportunity, and I congratulate them for it, and I really hope that the commission will speed the process so that this can happen. Thank you.
Scott Iker.
Good evening, Commissioners. Scott Iker with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. About twenty-five years ago, things were very different in this town, and at the site of the MLB Bike Shop, there was the Lou Rowland Exxon, and it was a family-run business, and because things were so much different than a gas station turned out to be kind of a hub of our town. At some point, twenty years or more ago, it shut down, and since then, that lot has been empty, and it has been blighted. It has gone through a number of stages, and most of them have been downward, from having a green lake for the better part of a year, to now looking at the potential to have a thriving business moving into it. I know that a lot of concessions and adjustments have been made at the, not just the Planning Commission, but also at Public Works. I know that the landlord has also worked with the tenant in order to make things easier for him to move in. I just think that this is one of the, one of the best improvements that's going to come to our downtown in this area, and I don't know how long. This is a blighted area that's going to be a great green business, it's going to help tourism in town. Kelly's a responsible person, along with his partners, and as Steve Sprinkle said, they're a thriving business, they're coming from Miners Oaks, their loss is our gain, but I think that everything needs to be done for you to follow through with what you said when their first appearance came before you, that you wanted to speed this through as quickly as possible with all due responsibility. And I think you need to vote to get this project moving on and keep it moving, because this is something that we need in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak on the project? Please, please state your name and where you live.
My name is Rob Feis, I'm a longtime Ojai resident and avid mountain biker, and I'd just like to say that over the years, I've driven by the, as everybody has already brought to attention, and everybody knows, this eyesore that's become more and more of an eyesore over the years. So when I heard of Kelly's plans and Greg's plans to move a bicycle shop in there, I was very delighted. One, because of the cosmetic effect it'll have for Ojai, and two, because of the business that they've both created in Miners Oaks, and the fact that it'll be a bigger business, a thriving business, it'd mean a tremendous amount for Ojai. So I think that if they asked for a two-year extension on sidewalks, three-year extension, four-year extension, if I was sitting there, I'd say, "Give it to them," because look what we've had for the last ten or fifteen years there, so I just want to voice my support in the most, in the strongest way for this project to go forward fast. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Jeff Otterbein, I live in Miners Oaks on Pottery Juan. I just want to say I worked with both Greg and Kelly at the Oak Grove School, and with Greg camping with kids, and I just want to mention their ability to connect with the youth in our community, and the way they interact with children, it's a really big asset to our community, and I think we'd all be well-served to have them downtown Ojai. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else from the audience like to come forward? I see no one stepping up to the plate, so I think we need a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll probably close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's time for the Planning Commission to discuss this, so who would like to step up?
I'll start it off. We had, we had a love fest last time, and I, this is another love fest, it's a great project and a great, a great location. I'm going to bring up a couple of issues that I think are really important for us to consider, not only for this project, but for all projects. We could start with Ann's interpretation of the discussion about the street trees, and that they don't belong within the right of way, and I completely disagree. I think she may have been misunderstood, may have misunderstood that, but I've walked by there more often than I drive by there, and that's a desolate spot, and the sun is coming from the south, we need the trees in the sidewalk, just like they are at the, at the museum, and the next property, and the next, you know, that's our standard for our street trees there. So I'd want to clarify that. The other one is also tree-related, and I brought this up last time, and it has to do with the sycamore tree. And to me, the issue here, and this is going to be coming up a lot, because solar panels are becoming very prevalent, and it's a good thing, solar panels are great, but not at the expense of great mature trees. And I think we really need to take a close look at that, as to what a tree does, and what a solar panel does, and are we going to cut down trees so that we can have better solar access? And we've gotten a couple of tree reports on this, and it's almost as if it's a hammer in search of a nail. The hammer being, we want to get this tree out of the way, so we have better solar access. The nail being, well, let's find, let's think of something. Imagine if we were to remove every tree that's within fifteen feet of a building in Ojai. I don't think so. I don't think we want to do that. Secondly, there was no structural engineer review of the building that said that this tree was causing a problem. So that, along with what a tree does to for the environment, I've got a write-up from Urban trees improve our air, and there's a whole page here of what they do, how they filter out the air pollution and that sort of thing. They protect our water, they intercept rainwater, and the roots actually take pollutants out of, out of the ground. They save energy, they can reduce daytime air conditioning costs by fifty-eight percent for a tree that's, and this says, for a tree planted closely, close to the building. They extend the life of paved surfaces, the shade keeps the asphalt from getting so hot. So here, what, if you actually look at this tree, there's no, I don't see a potential hazard, I see a healthy tree that has proven that it can, that it can maintain its root-to-shoot ratio, it's fifty-eight feet tall, and somehow growing with pavement around it. I think that's, that's a real positive aspect. So the project's great, but those two items, I think, need to be resolved.
Ian, I'm, just for my own clarification, Paul, there was a tree report, and the tree report made it sound like it provided a potential safety hazard. Is that correct, that you didn't read that? That was my understanding. What is the basis, then, for the removal of the tree? Maybe staff could answer that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the, there's two reasons stated by the applicant and their arborist. One is, again, to, for solar access, and the other is that Mr. Inaba's report says that potentially that tree could end up causing some structural damage to that building. It's true there wasn't an in-depth structural investigation to support that, but that's, I think, more of a general.
That's the gist of it.
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, it's coming right out from the very edge of the building rather than being nearby, nevertheless.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, I have a comment. Actually, last time, when the project came through, I was the one who brought up the fact that I'd looked at the tree, and structurally, and this is not having to do anything with the building, this has to do with the tree, you can see that probably what happened was there was a seed that landed in a crack between the concrete, there's a concrete pad, or it's maybe a raised sidewalk, and the asphalt germinated and grew up, so it's kind of intertwined with the asphalt and the concrete, and then because it's so close to the building, the tree goes up and then has a great bend in the tree, and structurally, with the tree, that does cause a problem. Now, I'm the first person on this committee who'd say, "I hate to cut a tree down." I'm on the tree committee, and I, I'm all for trees, and I completely understand the issue of not compromising removing trees for the sake of putting solar in, and I understand the benefits of the trees. So this is, it's a tough call on this tree, because that's what I first reported, when we were here, and I said I suggested they get the arborist report to find out if it was structurally sound. The tree does look healthy, I mean, like visually, you know, it's got a great canopy on it and what have you, and as the tree report said, potentially, it may have a problem. So I mean, presently, it doesn't. I mean, the suggestion might be to do a little further exploration and move some of the asphalt and see what, what it looks like under there, as far as the attachment of the tree to the soil and what have you. It's, I'm, I'm not sure how I'm going on this one. I love the tree, but at the same time, I can see that potential problem there.
Right, neither reports said there was anything structurally, and when I say neither, I'm also referring to Mr. Bostrom's report. Who just recommended removing some of the asphalt around it.
Right.
Now there, there was, see, that's where I go to, well, this is all about getting the tree out of the way, so we can have some solar panels, and this is Ojai, where we prioritize trees, we leave them in the, in the middle of the street.
Oh, sure, yeah.
You know? So that, I think we really, we have to really think about that with more and more solar panels coming, and that's a good thing, but not at the expense of our urban forests.
And I think last time, if I remember correctly, in our discussion about this, you know, we talked about, I'll pull out my plan for reference, but I don't know if that covered area could potentially be moved further to the east, if that would affect the solar gain if the panels were to go up.
Yeah, and that is a good point, it's not an either-or. The panels could go somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm just, I think at this point, I'm discussing it, I'm not saying that I'm, you know, saying it should come out, but I, I think it's worth a discussion.
Well, it's, and it's a good discussion item. I would like to ask Kelly to come forward and get his feelings on this. Are you willing, Kelly, to leave the tree there, or, I mean, what's your stance?
The thing is with the solar, it's not, we don't have imminent plans to put it in right now. I mean, God, I love trees, and I'm not an arborist, but I mean, at this point, I don't think it would hinder the project to leave the tree in a temporary situation, to just reevaluate it when, you know, and like you were saying, we don't want to take trees out for solar, but, you know, maybe we can look at, you know, the structural, it is close to the building, and it is growing at an angle, and it has asphalt up the side of it. I think for the long-term health of the building, it should be looked at. I mean, I'm not going to say that I'm an expert on that, but I think it should be looked at, that is it going to affect the building? You know, I'm not saying we should take it out for the solar, but we should look at that, the structure of the building.
It sounds as though, it's not a, it's something that could be looked into further.
Yeah.
And maybe even some mitigation in terms of removing the asphalt around the tree, based on an arborist's, an arborist's opinion on the matter, to encourage its health, its healthiness.
But it wasn't planted there, and like you said, it probably was grown in a crack, and it's growing at an angle outside, so, but maybe it's a perfectly healthy tree, and it won't affect the structure.
And it really doesn't interfere with your circulation, or you could?
No, and that's not why we wanted to take it out.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Great, well, that helps, thanks.
Yeah.
I really appreciated the changes in the parking configuration and the driveway, and keeping the Ojai Avenue entrances and exits just for bikes.
Yeah, I mean, that's the gist of the, I mean, that's the point of the business.
And I'm also concerned about the trees on Ojai Avenue. I think it would look very strange to have the trees in one position down the block, and along the block to the west, and then have them in a different position, as long as it's not a safety issue, would make sense to keep consistency.
I agree with Commissioner Luckman and Crowtree on the street tree planting, and in reference, of course, to the other streets, or the trees that are to the west are in the sidewalk, and I too have walked down there, and that area is screaming for shade, and the aesthetic value of having the trees there. And if you drive around town, you can see new trees that are planted actually very close to the curb, using the proper planting standard, which is available. So I, I'm in agreement, I would like to see them in the sidewalk.
I'd just like to say, Kelly, I really appreciate all the work you guys did on these plans. I was really thrilled when I looked at them, and because you guys really listened to what we said at the concept review, and I appreciate you making all the changes. I'm really happy with the way this whole project approaches Ojai Avenue here, where you have just the real skinny places, only bikes can go there, I think that's going to be fabulous. And I really appreciate you guys working with us, as well, we're trying to help you guys as well. And I agree with all the other commissioners about these street trees. No one parks there, there's, I don't think you're even allowed to park there, so I don't think opening corridors is an issue.
Not presently, we're working on that.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to have diagonal parking all the way along there, but I don't think that's going to happen in our lifetime. So I'm prepared to vote for the project as soon as we can come to agreement.
I have one other quick comment, and it's very minor, and it's just an aesthetic one, and it has to do with the lighting. You showed us a lighting plan with two fixtures, and the pathlight or bollard-type lighting, it's hard to read for me, even with my glasses, to read the legend, so the print is really small, so I think it's probably.
small, so I think it's probably for pathlighting, but it looks very modern and contemporary as compared to the, the pole lamp, and considering the architecture that's going to be applied to the building, I would just recommend if you could use, find something a little more compatible, and not so contemporary or, or modern looking.
I'd like to say that I think the project's wonderful, and the only concerns I really had was the gain of the tree. I think that should just be looked at a little more in depth, definitely.
Well, my comment would be, echo my fellow commissioners, but, and I, and I like Paul's term of the love fest, because really, this project is, really fits so neatly into the vision that I believe, as a Board of Commissioners, we have. Just two weeks ago, we kind of presented our vision to the city council, and part of that vision was emphasizing the qualities and traits that ma, that make for a strong town or a strong Ojai. And this particular project incorporates a myriad of those ideas. We, in terms of its openness to the public realm, it's unfolding people walking down the street, you have great aesthetics going on, and, and the general business model, it's just, it's, it's an awesome project. And so, thank you for bringing it forward to us, and also for listening to us. It's obvious that you're, you're, you're trying to work with us, and, and we appreciate that. So, I think at this time, I'd like to hear someone maybe come up with a motion, or is there further comment?
I could do that, unless, did you wanna?
No.
Okay. So, I move to adopt the required findings for design review permit DRP 11-09 and conditional use permit CUP 11-05 as specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including sequa findings with the following modification of the findings. And that would be number eight, where we would remove the words "of one native potentially hazardous sycamore tree," so that that would then read, "The applicant has presented a landscape plan that fully mitigates the removal of several non-native trees on site." And number two, accept the sequa categorical exemption for DRP 11-09 and CUP 11-05 included as Attachment B of the staff report. And three, approve DRP 11-09 and CUP 11-05 subject to the conditions included as Attachment C of the staff report. And, stay with me here, with, with the following modifications of the conditions, in number eight, we change 30 to 90. On number 12, it, the wording stands except that we add a sentence, sentence at the beginning, removal of the native sycamore tree is not approved. On number 14, we add a sentence at the beginning, "If over 50 cubic yards of soil is moved, then the, then the rest of it can stay." On condition number 15, we would add number two from the Public Works Director's memo of November 15th, and number two had to do with the signs and, you know, the, the site distance triangle. On number 19, under the Public Works conditions, we would add number four from the November 15th memo, with the following modification in number four. And that would be that we eliminate the last sentence that says, "No other curb, gutter, sidewalk, and other right-of-way improvements are required," because we've already, it's already been covered that they get five years to do the, to do the sidewalks and curbs. And I'm concerned that that last sentence would eliminate street trees. Also, for number 19, we would add number one from the Public Works Director's memo, with, with that one having a modification that would say, it would add onsite after proposed. So in other words, "Any proposed onsite trees shall be kept a minimum of three feet behind the existing sidewalks and maintained by the owner." A modification to number 20, would, we would add number six from the Public Works Director's memo, saying that there wouldn't be a drainage fee. And that concludes my motion.
I second.
Rule call.
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
All right, that's it, guys, thanks. Great project.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to seeing it.
item on the public agenda, and that is design review permit DRP 11-05, conditional use permit CUP 11-03, lot merger TPM 11-01, general plan amendment GPA 11-01, zone change ZZ 11-01, lot line adjustment LLA 11-01, tree permit T 11-19, and certificate of compliance CC 11-01 for the proposed project involving the expansion of facilities for the existing Wild Tennis Academy, including 7,850 square feet of new dormitory and support facilities, and four new tennis courts. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Similar to the last time, I'll, I'll give a brief overview of the existing setting and the project, highlight some of the more relevant planning and environmental issues that came up, and then after that, talk about some corrections to the staff report and a couple of issues that have been raised since the staff report was published, that also lead to some suggestions for changes to the conditions of approval. This project site is about 2.77 acres, it's two assessors parcels and part of a third. The third is that, that supports the Ojai Valley Athletic Club. This site has frontage on Bryant Circle and Pope Lane on the south, and a portion of the right-of-way of Fulton Street, where it, there's a planned extension into that right-of-way, south to Bryant Circle. So currently on the site, there's a 13,000 square foot building. This is a two-story office building that currently is used as dormitory and office space for the Wild Tennis Academy, and also parking areas. Some of the parking spaces are operationally shared with the Ojai Valley Athletic Club, and there's also an existing reciprocal access easement that allows both of those operations to access each other's property through their respective sites. There's also a basketball court, a sand volleyball court, and a couple of small accessory structures on the site, and some vacant space. The arborist also identified 17 protected trees on the site. That would include seven coastlive oaks, six eucalyptus, two Monterey cypress, and one California sycamore and a toyon. The Ojai Valley Athletic Club is to the west of the project site. There's a vacant lot and light industrial uses to the north, light industrial uses to the east and the south, and to the southwest, there is sort of the backyards or the, part of a large lot residential subdivision across Pope Lane. As far as prior review, on November 17th, 2010, the planning commission considered this project as a concept review. The comments were generally favorable at that review, but were varied. Much of the discussion focused on the project's relationship to the future Fulton Street along the eastern side. Commissioners, as part of that discussion, encouraged the project team to design the Fulton Street frontage to relate to and engage with the future Fulton Street, and for their right-of-way improvements there to support a complete street approach. And there were also comments about connectivity through the site as it's available now, and would be after the project, and other assorted issues. This project includes both the physical development that's proposed and the proposed use. This would include an expansion in enrollment at the academy, the tennis academy, to a limit that would be set by the new conditional use permit, as well as new and remodeled school building that would accommodate more boys dorm rooms and more operational school space, including school offices. In addition to that renovation and expansion of the main building, a new field house is proposed and two new shade structures on the eastern part of the site to support the tennis program, and four new tennis courts. In addition, the circulation would be reconfigured through the site, and the parking and landscaping would also be reconfigured. In order to do all this, a general plan and amendment and a rezone to designate the entire site as public quasi-public, that's P for the land use designation and PL for zoning, is also proposed, to better reflect the proposed use and to allow it, because portions of the site are currently zoned M1 for light manufacturing, although that use hasn't occurred on the site for decades if ever. It's been office building through conditional use permits for maybe 30 years, or 20-plus years. The existing school and office building is located on a single 1.5 roughly acre parcel, 1.46. The proposed campus expansion and improvement plan would require lot line adjustments and a merger involving both that property and the larger Ojai Valley Athletic Club property, which is eight and a quarter acres roughly to the west, and one existing about a third acre property that's between the two, that fronts on Pope Lane. So the three parcels would be adjusted and merged to result in two parcels, one which would be 2.77 acres for the tennis academy, and the Ojai Valley Athletic Club property would be reduced to approximately 7.35 acres. So it's a, a lot line adjustment and a merger. As far as the proposed structural development, the main building would be, that exists right now, would be renovated and expanded from roughly 13,000 to 19,000 square feet, and uses in the building would include 11 boys dorm rooms on one floor, 13 on another, a dorm parent room on each floor that would accommodate two students and two parents, common areas and lounge, laundry restrooms, school classrooms and school offices. The new field house, which would be east of that, next to the tennis courts, would be 18,000, 1,850 square feet, so the total structural development would go up to about 20, almost 21,000 square feet. Two open-sided pergolas are also proposed, really shade structures, they'd be adjacent to the westernmost and the easternmost proposed tennis courts respectively, and they'd be about 15 feet tall, one would be 44 by 16 feet, and the other roughly 37 by 14 feet, and they'd have architectural projections that would, in the middle, that would extend a few feet higher than that. For the new tennis courts, including one with stadium seating, that would be the easternmost, the courts would be lit with 22-foot-high light fixtures, except for the stadium court, which would be lit with 35-foot-high light fixtures. I'll talk a little bit more about the lighting in a moment when we get to the environmental issues. So the site would continue essentially to be used as the main campus of the Wild Tennis Academy. If I, if it's supposed to be wheel, I'm sorry, you'll have to correct me afterwards. I have the same issue with my name. This would include the dormitory uses, the classroom and tennis academy offices. Some of the differences are that some of the tennis instruction that's currently, happens off-site, would be conducted onsite in the new tennis courts. In addition to these uses and the structural development, the enrollment would increase, and the conditional use permit contemplates a maximum of 100 students. Right now, this is variation from year to year apparently in the students, but it would go from roughly 65 to 100. Of these students, up to 52, along with the four dorm parents, would be in the onsite boys dorm, and the other students would be a mix of girls that are housed at the girls' dorm, which is at the Victorian Building to the west, and also students that are non-resident, day students. The increase in enrollment would reflect the proposed increase, so because of that, the increase would actually reflect the increase in boarding students to capacity for the most part, because the number of day students would pretty much remain similar to, to where it's been. And the tennis academy would have up to 38 staff members, which is just a few more than The applicant is proposing one tennis tournament a year. This would occur currently envisioned in February and last approximately a week. The weekday matches would be in the morning, between 10:00 AM, late morning and early after, or mid-afternoon and 4:00 PM, and after 6:00 PM in the evenings, so this would avoid peak traffic times is one feature of that arrangement. Saturday and Sunday matches would happen between 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Attendance is expected to be about 45 players and up to 100 spectators on the weekdays and up to 250 on the weekends. As far as the design and the landscaping, the remodel and additions would be in what the architect's called a modern Western craftsman style. This would include plaster, stone, and wood finishes. Probably shouldn't say too much about this, because they have a presentation with visuals afterwards, which I'm lacking the visuals, and I can speak about it a little better, so I'll kind of gloss over that for the moment. Landscaping would be a mix of ground covers, perennials, and grasses, vines, shrubs, and trees. The majority of the landscape plan would be low water use and drought tolerant, although there would be some medium water demand areas and one lawn, lawn area. Three eucalyptus trees are proposed for removal due to hazardous conditions, and seven other trees, including two oaks, three eucalyptus, and two cypress, would be removed to accommodate the project. Finally, this, one of the accessory buildings, I said there were a couple on site, is a one-story garage building in the southwestern portion of the property that dates actually to 1910, that would also be removed for the project. Few words on access and parking. The project site would be accessible from a new driveway to the future Fulton Street, and also, as now, from Bryant Street. Right now, the existing curb cut is sort of towards the eastern part of the site to get on to the property from Bryant Circle, but that would be relocated, I'm sorry, the western part would be relocated east of its current location to give some room from the corner. As, as now, the employee parking, the van parking, and the dorm parking would, would be on the south and east sides of the building, and those would be accessible through gated entrances from the northern accessway from Fulton, and also from the relocated Bryant Circle driveway. Through traffic to or from the Ojai Valley Athletic Club parking lot would be routed along the northern property line, which is a change from the way it is now to go through the site, you'd be coming out on Bryant Circle, but the future through traffic would go to Fulton Street, so, so that would be Fulton Street rather than Bryant Circle. Currently, and this is proposed to continue, that the students aren't allowed to have cars at school. They travel to and fro by van pool for the most part, and I imagine by bike and walking as well. And for that reason, and also because of the, because some of the... And for that reason and also because of the, because some of the office uses that are in the building now would move out, the increase in traffic is projected to be relatively low from the project, and the traffic study didn't identify any significant or potentially significant traffic impacts. In staff's analysis, we determined that the proposed use and development would be potentially consistent with the requested P designation and PL zoning, public quasi-public. Typical uses on P-designated properties include government offices and facilities, churches, cultural facilities. The other boarding school within city limits, the Ojai Valley School, is in the P designation, which was an indicator. And in addition, schools and parks and recreational facilities are permitted within the PL zone district, and obviously, the project has some component of that with the tennis course and the athletic instruction. It's also, staff feels relatively logical to extend the P designation, which covers the Ojai Valley Athletic Club property. It's a continuous property to that, and it's had this educational, with a recreational flavor, use for quite a while, and that's proposed to continue. And finally, the project generally meets the parameters of the zoning regulations for the PL district. Many of those, as you know, aren't set like they are for other districts, but rather are determined through the planning commission's review process. As far as parking, the project would reduce the overall parking supply from about 194 spaces shared between the club and the school to about 137 spaces. And this includes the off-site girls' dorm parking of about four spaces. And the school expansion would increase the projected peak parking demand as well. The traffic experts did a parking demand study and determined that the parking demand roughly would go up to about 133 spaces for the two uses. And so it's been, that study determined that the proposed 137 spaces would be sufficient to accommodate the peak parking demands of the two sites. To make sure that, to encourage the students further to comply with the car restriction, although I'm sure that the school does a good job of that, there's a condition proposed that requires the students to sign an agreement, sort of putting that in writing, that they wouldn't bring cars or park them on adjacent streets. Parking for special events is a topic that came up a little later in the review process, and the method for handling that isn't, hasn't been determined yet, and I thought that should be a topic for tonight, depending on whether the project moves forward. But the matches held on Saturdays and Sundays would be nearing completion of the tournaments and would generate the highest spectator levels, and it's expected that that would exceed the parking supply that's proposed. So a couple of different suggestions for how to handle the overflow parking have been brought up by the applicant. One is to use on-street parking in combination with either, one, the 60 overflow spaces at Lower Libby Park with a shuttle to bring people back and forth, if the city agreed to such an arrangement, or an agreement with adjacent businesses that are typically closed during those times, such as the behavioral sciences technologies, to use their parking lots on the weekend. Because weekend parking demands on Bryant Circle are generally relatively low and because there's likely sufficient parking in the area to accommodate the overflow, staff thinks that that's probably the better way to go out of the two, but of course, either one would work and it's a topic of discussion. Bryant Circle has about 140 on-street parking spaces itself, and the behavioral sciences technology parcel has over 70. And they're all within walking distance, they wouldn't need a shuttle. So condition number 14 is in the staff report, and that would allow some flexibility for that unless the commission is interested in getting specific. Regarding the design of the project's frontage on Fulton Street, again, that was a topic of discussion at the concept review. Condition number, I should say, the plan hasn't changed dramatically on how that interface is treated, but condition number 25 is something we put in there, a suggestion that requires that the landscaping along that boundary be at least as level as possible so that there's visual permeability and at least the potential for informal pedestrian access, just so that the site doesn't appear closed off by the topographic difference. The lighting is something we heard about, I think from at least one member of the public, as a matter of concern, and it usually is on athletic projects. The proposed light standards would be relatively tall compared to your basic Ojai parking lot lighting, say, 22 and 35 feet. But the type of fixtures that are proposed are the kind that are hooded and directed downward. They're not what some people envision, the proposed fixtures aren't what some people envision as athletic field lighting and often is used for football and baseball fields, which is more of a vertical alignment that results in a lot of glare. It sort of shoots the light at the site from the sides, and that's not what's proposed in this case. So these fixtures are potentially, could be consistent or need to be consistent with your zoning codes' performance standards for lighting being directed down and shielded. There is a photometric study that was submitted with the plans that does show that because of the way the fixtures are designed direct downward, towards the edges of the property, that the light, the amount of light on the ground really does go down. And again, because of the way they're designed, they're not going to, they wouldn't create a significant amount of glare as seen from the side, the way the larger athletic lights do. Nevertheless, we suggested a condition that all tennis court lighting be turned off by 10:00 p.m. Another matter was public art. We bring this up mostly because the plans show a couple of different conceptual locations for the public art that would be required under your code. A couple of these areas on the plan that were shown aren't, don't appear to be consistent with the code's requirement that the public artist is in an area capable of public viewing from the nearest public right-of-way. There was one location in the southeastern corner of the site by the main entrance on that side of the building that would be visible somewhat, and so that's the one that staff would suggest. There are other opportunities, though, along with, in the landscaped areas along the perimeters of the site, along Bryant Street and the Fulton Street right-of-way. The final location, either way, would have to be consistent with the code's direction, but of course, the commission's input is appropriate as well. Environmental review was performed through CEQA via draft initial study mitigated declaration. This was circulated for public review in October of this year. The public review period is closed recently. Some of the potentially significant impacts that are identified in that document are aesthetics regarding night lighting, and that really, that resulted not in a determination that these type of fixtures would result in a significant impact, but at night, if it goes into the night, too far interferes with night sky visibility and other things, so that resulted in a mitigation measure for the prohibition of court lighting after 10:00 p.m. For air quality, the air quality modeling determined that dust from grading could be potentially significant, so the standard dust control mitigation measures were applied. Biological resources, these are impacts related to tree removal and nesting birds, and these are standard conditions you've seen before about nesting bird avoidance seasons and protection, and tree protection measures. Cultural resources, also potentially significant impact related to unrecorded, potentially buried resources and potential disturbance during grading. And the standard procedures for discovery of cultural resources are included in the MND, mitigated negative declaration. And finally, for hazards and hazardous materials, during a site visit, staff observed some very minor indicators that there may have been some storage of certain chemicals for maintenance, and there wasn't a lot of visible staining, ground staining, which is what you look for, but just in case, we included a mitigation measure requiring removal of those questionable materials. And if certain indicators are seen at that time of soil staining, et cetera, some sampling remediation may be necessary. The city did receive six comments on the draft environmental document. One comment was about the safety of the Fox Street intersection with the bike path and the Ojai Valley Athletic Club entrance. That concern was mostly worked out in meetings between the applicant and the commenter, as well as some discussions with staff, but that party still has concerns about that intersection, how it operates in general, and those have been forwarded to city staff to public works and planning, but are not directly related to traffic or changes in traffic generated by the project. Another condition approval of approval was added based on a gas company comment about their existing facilities and making sure that the construction doesn't conflict with them. A more robust monitoring requirement was added for archaeological resources because a local expert, or a local Native American had a comment about sensitivity in that area, and it was agreed that having an archaeological monitor would be, would be a better, bring that mitigation to where it needed to be to avoid that potential impact. Finally, there was a letter, not quite finally, there was a letter from California Department of Fish and Game. They had concerns about the city's oak tree ordinance and how it's implemented, and that's maybe a topic for a different meeting, but they did have specific comments about the project in regard to nesting bird avoidance, and so based on that, we did extend that period by a month. And finally, the Air Pollution Control District did have some additional suggestions. They didn't say there'd be a significant impact without them, but they suggested a few more dust control and emissions control measures, which we did add. That concludes the sort of overview of the project and the basics, and I'll try to get through this quickly, but these are some important things that came up through, since the publication of the staff report. One of them is that condition number 36 refers to required compliance with public works memorandum and conditions. This is one you see on most projects like this. One of those conditions was in regard to the county stormwater regulations. So it says, in public works memo, it says, "Refer to the attached information about the MPDES squimp process." And that's actually page, that attachment to the attachment is page 23 of 25 in attachment A. The change here is simply that those regulations have changed since that memo, so this is, I think, a fairly minor one. It's just that those should be replaced with the new MPDES information, which would be required regardless. The next one I wanted to mention was condition number 16. Oh, this is the same as we just had on the bike shop. This is another, a staff request that the 30 days for monitoring the lighting should be extended to 90 days, perhaps even more relevant to this project because it has a little more lighting in a lower light area. So again, we recommend that that 30-day monitoring period for after-light installation be extended to 90 days. Two of the findings in your staff report had minor errors, at least one of them was very minor. It was an inadvertent paragraph break that broke a finding into two numbers, so that the second one didn't seem to make sense. So we fixed that. And by the way, staff provided you a memo that has most of these in them and has the actual text, so that'll help. And the other one was a remnant of a discussion from a previous project in the general plan compatibility finding, so and there's some revised text for that in that memorandum as well. The applicant's arborist requested a number of changes to the condition of approval for protection of onsite trees. Staff reviewed these, worked with them a little bit on some minor revisions to their revisions, and most of them are relatively minor. After review, we think that they meet the intent of the measure and the condition, which is to protect the onsite trees during construction and with certain construction techniques. So we're comfortable recommending that, but they're in front of you in that memorandum from staff of November 14th for you to review. There's another addition, there's an additional correction that was not in the November 14th memo. This just came in hot off the press from the fire department. They worked with the applicant to make two minor, again, changes to their conditions, the fire, county fire conditions. One is slightly modifying one of the required driveway widths. I think after they looked at it, they found that it could still be safe. It was, it was a little narrower, and that would help resolve a conflict with a tree. That's the driveway near the southeast part of the property, I believe, of the building. And the other is, they referred to 40-foot turning radius required, but they used the outside radius, but what they meant to say was inside radius, so they corrected that in a corrected memo. So if the project was to go forward, we want, we'd want those things cleaned up as well. That was, that's conditions 9A and 9B. The last issue I want to talk about is one that was mentioned in the November 14th memo, but it's grown a bit in scope since we wrote that memo for you. This is about the extent, yes, sir? Hopefully not. That was the memo that had corrections to the staff. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a memo that I prepared on November 15th and I think got sent around.
We can make copies for you?
It's, basically, it's a supplement to the staff report that gives some text for each of the changes that I'm suggesting right now. Has the, it has the suggested changes to the tree protection things and strike out and underline.
The third time we mention that, I don't know why.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Maybe I can keep, I'll keep you occupied with one more thing while she makes copies. The last issue is one that was mentioned in the memo you haven't seen. It's about Fulton Street improvements. And this is about both the extent and the funding for the mechanism for making sure those improvements happen to the city's satisfaction. In that memo, we suggested modifying the condition that requires, that talks about Fulton Street improvements to clarify, let me go back just a little bit. The applicant read the condition that talks about Fulton Street improvements and wasn't sure if we were saying they had to, I think if I understand correctly, that we had, they had to improve the entire length, do the entire, basically, project of Fulton Street. So we wanted to put in some language saying adjacent to the site. But since then, that's, that concern has grown in scope, and so this led us to discussions with public works. We also want to recommend, because of those discussions, a more flexible approach to having those improvements installed than requiring the applicant to just build them. Because the city's going to put in the Fulton Street extension pretty much all at once, it may be better to do that with a fair share, a reasonable fair share contribution to the project budget rather than have the applicant design and install that one part of it separately from the city project. This, of course, is one way to go forward, and we can talk about what the commission envisions. But that's, that could be one clean way to make sure it happens. We know, we understand that the Fulton Street extension itself has been for the Complete Streets Committee, and so that, the design of those public improvements is being looked at in that context as well, and so maybe that's the way to do it. I just wanted to mention it so that you have that flexibility to keep the condition as it is, which really talks about the applicant installing it, to having a more integrated approach with the city's process for that extension.
Questions for staff? I don't often say this, but I'm a little confused. And it's, it's because of not having seen this memo before, and so I kind of went blank on a couple of those items, so I'm not sure what staff is recommending. Am I alone?
In terms of how these memorandums are?
Right, right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of changes to the initial staff report, right?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is, this is true. Sometimes in the planning process, things come up closer to the date of the hearing, and one way to handle that is to do a follow-up memorandum, and obviously, if it didn't get to you, that's, that's not good. Some of these changes that I just went through are pretty minor. Other ones are going to bear some discussion.
Okay, so let me, let me, you seem to have been mentioning a couple of memos. Do we, are we only dealing with what was in the packet and November 14th memo, or are there more?
No. I may refer to the fire department memorandum, but you can not worry about that, and I may refer to the public works memorandum. But both, the issues that came up in those, I covered in the points I just went through, and they're, and most of those are pretty minor, and I'm happy to go through them again and apologize for any confusion, but...
Yeah, there's, there's, appears to be a lot more detail than what we heard. It probably warrants some review. Maybe at this point, Abe, you just want to run us through the points so we make sure we know what's on the table here?
I'd be happy to. Maybe go through this memo?
Yeah. Let's do it.
The first one is the tree protection measures that I mentioned. And again, these are the kinds of variations you'll see in the language here that the applicant's arborist suggested. They're the kinds of variations you'll see in these tree protection measures from project to project generally. So I didn't think it was necessary to go through every one in detail. If any of them stood out to staff as potentially problematic, we would have pulled that out and either worked with it more with the applicant or talked about it with you. So I think they're fairly minor or routine, and they could have shown up in the first place. I don't know, but we can talk about each one at your pleasure.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I was just going to suggest you just read it, and if there's questions, we'll do that, otherwise, we'll move on.
All right. This is mitigation bio one from the mitigated negative declaration, and also is in the conditions of approval. So number A under that mitigation, let me get the actual condition number for you. 31. Yeah. So in number A, "A pre-construction meeting shall be held with contractors." Previously, the language just said contractors, and what was added was subcontractors and a qualified city-approved project arborist. I think this was just to make sure the arborist is included in that meeting.
I think this was just to make sure the arborist is included in that meeting.
Okay.
Number B, we changed site plan to tree preservation plan, because there's a specific plan that shows the tree protection zones, et cetera. And added clause that prior to any work, that the tree protection zones are marked at the outside of the edge of the drip line plus five feet. This is to add specificity. And that the tree protection fencing, instead of "shall," also remain upright during landscape installation. We added, "may be temporarily adjusted for necessary access during construction only as allowed by the project arborist." Number C, which is about keeping the tree protection zones clear of parking vehicles and equipment and things like that that can damage roots and trees, we added, "Contractors shall exercise care in the operation of equipment or machinery near trees to avoid scarring, gashing, scraping, or any contact with trees." D has to do with monitoring grading, had the arborist monitoring grading, and what we added was that the contractor shall notify the arborist at least forty-eight hours in advance of any work under the drip line, to make sure that they're onsite for that portion of the work. "All fence posts shall be carefully dug so that roots are not cut," and that what we added is unless approved by project arborist, there are some roots that go beyond the tree protection zone or that require a fence, it be cut, and some contractors just hack through those roots, and there are times when they can be cut cleanly and that project arborist could supervise that. As far as excavation within the, within the critical root zones but outside of the tree protection zones, because the actual critical root zone can go beyond the five feet beyond the drip line, that excavation can happen, should be done by hand where reasonable, and we added some specificity on how that could be done, and that, you know, roots encountered that are one inch or greater must be tunnelled under or around. Certain techniques like water jet or air knife could be used. Root pruning shall be only, only be done if allowed by the arborist, and when roots are pruned, they shall be cleanly cut. Excavation within the tree protection zone shall be completed and backfilled as soon as possible. If longer than one day or in hot weather, that the excavation should be shaded by tarps and adequate moisture maintained at the direction of the project arborist. This is additional protection for exposed roots. You'll see a theme here, is that the project arborist, under these conditions as amended, has a lot more involvement in the data, in the activity on the site. Where, tree pruning where limbs may conflict with equipment and proposed structures shall be done prior to excavation and grading, and we added, "and under the direction of the project arborist." So another level of supervision. On number K, or letter K, civil, it used to say civil engineers shall specify pavers on sand with no disturbance to the roots of tree number four for the proposed walkway. We added, "or landscape architects." So the civil engineer doesn't need to necessarily be there to do, to specify, make that specification. On M, the way it was written previously was that the tree protection fencing would go around a large group of trees all at once in a big oblong shake, shape, and that was changed to allow for several tree protection zones around groups of trees. Letter N, this, the, the project arborist determined that there may be some flexibility about keeping the building pad for their way from the particular tree, tree number three, in an effort to reduce potential impacts to the root system, but the arborist suggested that certain construction techniques may afford the same protection. So, if the arborist was onsite and said it was okay, they, or, you know, looked at that tree and said it was okay, spot footings and installation of paving above grade may be acceptable in consultation with the arborist rather than moving the building footprint. That's letter N. The last change is just a improvement in the language. Civil engineers shall install paving rather than build paving. Those are the suggested changes to the tree protection measure. Should I go on? Mm-hmm. Okay. The next one is just that simple typographical error of one paragraph being broken into two and creating two numbers, and so what I've done here in the memo on page three or four, right in the middle, is show you what it should look like as all one paragraph. The next bullet was the finding that had an error, it had a remnant from another staff report, that discussed a different project, and what we're suggesting is that that language be taken out, and project-specific language, which is, this is about general plan compatibility, because the, the amount of new construction isn't, isn't massive compared to what's there now. It's expansion of existing building and another couple of small structures that, due to that, due to the modest amount and scale of the new construction, all which would be one-story, the new construction. And because of the, the distance between the surrounding development and this, and this project, and the variation in the kinds of buildings around, that it, it's compatible even though it's an increase in scale. So that was that language. Moving on to the change to number sixteen, this is the thirty-to-ninety day change that we talked about in the other project. Now we're on page four of four, the first new bullet. The second new bullet is the one I refer to. This is on draft, the condition number thirty-six. That condition requires compliance with the requirements of the Public Works Department, including those specified in their June 2011 memo, another memo. That memo was attached to the conditions, and an attachment to that attachment is, and you've seen this many times, is the photocopied MPDES squimp water quality requirements from the county. So what we're saying is, those have changed and the old ones are in there, and it's just a notification. In case anyone's looking at that thinking they use the old ones, the new ones really apply and would be consistent with that memo still. The last one is, the last bullet on page four of four, and the last bullet in this list, is about condition twenty-four, and originally, we wanted to give the applicant a greater comfort level in what we were suggesting be required for the Fulton Street improvements by just saying adjacent to the project site rather than the entire length. But as I noted, there's been further discussions with Public Works where we talked about possibly an alternative way to word this to allow even further flexibility to maybe have a fair share, proportional funding of the Fulton Street improvement rather than having them build their parts separately. But, and just returning to my expansion on that concept, well, I guess that really is it. I've pretty much covered it. There is one other thing that isn't in this memo, the November fourteenth memo we just went through. There's one other thing, and that's the fire conditions, which, again, we consider to be relatively minor, small adjustments to their conditions to be a little more sensitive to the project, and that's for condition nine A and nine B.
Great. I noticed, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of permeable area in this project is being covered in hardscape, tennis courts, walkways and such. Were there any provisions in this plan taken to retain water onsite or create rain gardens, things of that nature?
Mr. Chair, there actually, there actually are, there's, first of all, they, well, rain gardens, no. Provisions to retain water onsite, yes, and of course, they'd be required to comply with the county's requirements for keeping water onsite. For the moment, if I could, perhaps during the applicant's presentation, they can talk more about how the drainage...
Great, yeah, we can hold up on that.
We can come back.
Okay. Questions for staff? All right, then, we'll listen to the, have the applicant come forward. You've been waiting a while.
I didn't hear that. Wheel, while, whatever. I just wanted to say, we're excited to be here, and thank you so much for hearing, or listening to all this about our project. I know it's complicated, but I just want to let you know that, because it doesn't seem like a lot of people know, we're in our fifteenth year here in Ojai, and my wife and I, she had to leave because our, our boys are ready for bed, but we came here with one child and now we have three, and it's one of the best decisions we've ever made, was to move to Ojai. We're really happy the way things have developed and grown, and we came here to build a school for young tennis players, and that's what we've got. And we are excited that, this is a huge step for us, to actually purchase the property and, you know, be, to own it, and we're excited about it and looking forward to shape it to the way, to our vision of how we want these kids to go to school and learn tennis and live in this great town of ours. So, that's all. Again, I appreciate everybody's time, especially Sherry and Abe have done a lot of work, even on all the memos he brought and didn't bring, but, look, he missed that one. And I just wanted to, just make a note again to thank everybody included with the project, Pete and Scott and Tom and Adrian, and also just to remind everybody that this was one of David Berry's final projects, and want to remember him in all this as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah. I have to face it to the screen. It's power. And if the light goes on, I'll turn it down a little. You see something? Hold there, it's okay. So let it do that for a second. You don't do that. Are you doing it, Carol? You want me to turn it on? I can do it. You're in it. Don't get it, you're not. Hold on, take, take your, your hands off it. There you go. Then the blue buttons on your remote, right and left. Are you changing it? Carol, don't change it.
Thank you.
Alan, I'm the architect for the project. David Berry and I came into architecture out of school at the same time, and I replaced him when he left a firm up in Santa Barbara. And then when I left that firm, Adrian Coulter, who was working for David and was working for me before then, came back to work for me now. And so, we are the two putting this, this project together, just so you understand why I'm here. So, well, I guess we'll press left and right.
I see you're doing it, Carol. They've already got to see it twice. Hold on. Are you changing it, Carol? Yeah, I, I can call it. You got a player? Hello? It looks like somebody's got control of it. We're trying to get a little track for you. Who's got that player? Someone has to get it going now. Somebody else is. Is that Carol? She touching it? That's Carol. Oh, she keeps pressing F five. Just push function F five, shift F five. Does that mean you're holding F five? It's definitely moving.
Nope. So, I'm not going back, I'm going forward.
Isn't that his name? Well, somebody needs to touch something.
We have it in PDF too, if that can make it any better.
Oh, Tom's trying this. He's, he's, Tom's doing it. Oh. Yeah, he's a hacker.
Ta-da.
See, no, but look, things go well.
Well, these fall along with the time that they're given, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think the time to give the slides is very brisk.
Yeah.
Three more seconds. No pressure. Just slide show.
Stop.
There we go. There we go.
It's on an auto, it must have.
Auto slide.
Well, close it out. Carol, I'm going to close it out. I go. Carol. Close it out, Carol. Close the X it out. No. Now close your thing out. Now reopen the PowerPoint down there. Now do the year shift F five.
Still doing the same thing. All right. We'll follow you.
All right. I'll have to...
Thanks for trying, guys. I think we're going to move forward here.
Um, I've got my set, but I was, it's hard to point to anything. So I'll just kind of go through what my presentation is, and if there are any questions, I need to point to something, then maybe this will be gone by then. On the original site plan, the project had a parent-student apartment building and a one-story addition for the, for the girls dormitory. Those have been eliminated as part of this project, so the project is smaller. The covered parking we had has been removed. As Abe said, the girls dorm has been relocated to the, to the Victorian. There was a field house that we showed you before that was over on the, towards the stadium court. We realigned all the, all the tennis courts to make them work better with the, the site. And in eliminating the apartment building, we put a little field house in there, which essentially has a large gathering room. Really is going to be mostly used for the tennis tournament, for players to find out what's going on, et cetera, and then there are two sets of restrooms on either side. So that, that's the field house component. There's a little maintenance building we were showing for Ojai Valley Tennis Club that we were asked to remove. We've moved the trash away from the street close to the building, and like Abe said, the driveway on Bryant Circle was relocated to get it farther away from Fulton Street for safety reasons. I said we reduced our square footage, our footprints down a couple thousand feet. The, those latest fire department conditions, took me a while, but I finally got through to allow us to have, there's a short little segment next to the student patio. There's an oak tree on the opposite side, I want to save that tree, so we pinched the, the access road down to fifteen feet instead of twenty-five feet. A lot of the original conditions, the...
Can you use your thing now?
Oh. Well, I forgot which slide I'm on here.
Blue button.
Okay, I just, this was to give you an overall view of where the, the building sits. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to come back to this slide. That's the original plan you guys saw before. There's the apartment building. There's, that's the addition that's being removed. This addition stays here, that's a two-story addition. And this addition here for the gathering area and patio stays. And then these courts have been realigned, you'll see that, and this building has been moved over here, and then this driveway has been moved over there. So those are the differences between the project you're seeing now and the previous one that you, that you saw. So here's our new, our new site plan. Still has the addition here. The existing building is like so. Administrative offices and functions were moved here. They have public access through parking in this location. This is a paved courtyard area around this existing tree. These are the two shade structures. Show you the elevations in a minute, but this is kind of an entry structure, kind of a formal entry for the tennis court portion of the project. And this one here is a shade structure, structure for fans to watch tennis.
Now do the shift F5.
All right. All right. I'll have to... I've got my set, but it's hard to point to anything. So, I'll just kinda go through what my presentation is, and if there are any questions, I need to point to something, then maybe this will be gone by then. On the original site plan, the project had a parent-student apartment building and a one-story addition for the girls dormitory. Those have been eliminated as part of this project, so the project is smaller. The covered parking we had has been removed. As Abe said, the girls dorm has been relocated to the Victorian. There was a field house that we showed you before that was over towards the stadium court. We realigned all the tennis courts to make them work better with the site. And in eliminating the apartment building, we put a little field house in there, which essentially has a large gathering room. Really is gonna be mostly used for the tennis tournament, for players to find out what's going on, et cetera. And then there are two sets of restrooms on either side. But that's the field house component. There's a little maintenance building we were showing for Ojai Valley Tennis Club that we're asked to remove. We've moved the trash away from the street close to the building. And like Abe said, the driveway on Bryant Circle was relocated to get it farther away from Fulton Street for safety reasons. I said we reduced our square footage, our footprints down a couple thousand feet. Those latest fire department conditions, took me a while, but I finally got through to allow us to have... There's a short little segment next to the student patio. There's an oak tree on the opposite side, wanna save that tree, so we pinched the access road down to 15 feet instead of 25 feet. A lot of those original conditions, the...
Can you use your thing now?
Oh. Forgot which slide I'm on here. Okay, this was to give you an overall view of where the building sits. If you have any questions on that, be happy to come back to this slide. That's the original plan you guys saw before. There's the apartment building. That's the addition that's being removed. This addition stays here, that's a two-story addition. This addition here for the gathering area and patio stays. And then these courts have been realigned, you'll see that. And this building has been moved over here. And then this driveway has been moved over there. So, those are the differences between the project you're seeing now and the previous one that you saw. So, here's our new site plan. Still has the addition here. The existing building is like so. Administrative offices and functions were moved here. They have public access through parking in this location. This is a paved courtyard area around this existing tree. These are the two shade structures. Show you the elevations in a minute, but this is kind of an entry structure, kind of a formal entry for the tennis court portion of the project. And this one here is a shade structure for fans to watch tennis in the shade. There was a little talk about the Fulton Street work. What we've done, what we're showing, is an access at this location where the new driveway would be. The road, we get a change in elevation between Fulton Street here and this pad. And in order for us to do any kind of informal access, it also has to be accessible for the disabled. And so, those tend to create nice, long ramps and things like that. In addition, this is really kind of the back of the house, to be honest with you. And Mark is very concerned about safety and such things. There's only one door in the back of the building, which is right here, so people can walk and go to here. There's no real reason, there's no access in here or in here. Access starts, you know, basically right there. So, we felt that what we would do is just connect our new sidewalks, which come to the front of the building, which come to the side of the building. This is really for exiting. And that's what we've done so far. But we're certainly willing to, you know, keep pursuing things, should you guys feel it's really important. We also added a couple of loading zones. There's a loading zone here to access, you know, for the administrative function. Loading zone here to access anything that may need to happen here. The vans are kept back here and will be brought, you know, to the front to load kids up. Also, did wanna mention too, we show Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the project. And that's really for Mark's financing purposes, should we need, should you need to break this up time-wise. Ideally, it's just gonna go 1, 2. But we're showing this as the first portion, first phase of work, and then this as the second phase. You had asked about a retention basin, that's what this lawn area is. This is a play area for the kids, soccer, whatever they wanna do. But it's also the retention basin for the water that we're needing to keep on-site because of the amount of paving. These are the floor plans, really quickly, again, we can come back to those if you're interested in particular. But what we have on the existing building is the boys dormitory portion here, dorm parent, central gathering space, and then classrooms and administrative function. And that's the same for the second floor. This is the field house. So, here's that center room I was talking about, bathrooms and changing areas on either end. This is the oak tree that was mentioned to make sure that we, when we do our footing work here, that we're conscious of, we may have to modify the structural solution in order to make that work and not impact the tree. Luckily, it's a one-story building. And these are the elevations, shows the modern, western craftsman style, but making a big improvement to this building. These are the two shade structures. This is the one next to the stadium court. This is the one, that's the entrance from the parking lot. So, it does provide a nice inviting point of reference. Then we've just put together the elevations, they're pretty much very similar to what you saw before in the pallet, and just compare them to what's there now. And what we really wanna just emphasize here is that we are taking a building that's not that pretty, I'm being generous, and really making it look nice, blend in with the neighborhood and the city of Ojai. So, that's kind of the same thing. And then this is our landscape plan, and Tom's just gonna give you a real quick synopsis of what's going on in the landscape.
Because this is a campus, the lawn, you'll notice it's called intramural play lawn. And if you go over to the Wild Tennis Academy now, you can observe that the student body exercises and they play soccer on that lawn. So, it is really a part of their campus life, is to have that lawn. And most schools and campuses have some lawn area for that reason. That is why we've kept that as a lawn area. And it does also function as the infiltration area. There's a bioswale that will collect all the water from the tennis, the new tennis courts, the four new tennis courts. That's all gonna feed into that area where that water can be retained and infiltrate into the groundwater before it overflows offsite, meets the required conditions. Also, on the north side of the existing building, there is a bioswale on that side also. So, all of the water from the southerly and easterly parking areas will also be channeled into that bioswale. So, it'll be, the water will be cleaned, then also before it flows offsite. The trees and shrubs that are listed on this...
That one?
Yes, that's the other bioswale. Thank you. Trees and shrubs were selected, a variety of colorful trees and shrubs and ground covers. Because it is a campus, they're selected for their flowering characteristics, their beautiful ornamentals, so it'll make a pleasant campus environment. A little bit about tree preservation. Well, we went over that pretty extensively in Abe's comments. And I really thank you, Abe, for including those extra protection measures. You know, over the many years, I have learned that you have to have pretty tough, you gotta put some teeth in those tree protection measures, 'cause the contractors are just gonna take advantage of every opportunity they can. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about the landscape or trees.
That's it?
Okay.
I just had a quick comment. Tom, thanks for including all those revisions on the... I agree 100% on everything that you put on there.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I've got a question, probably of the architect. And it has to do with circulation and connectivity. And so, my understanding is that the driveway, the north driveway, will be open to the public.
Correct.
For, so that would be cars, bicycles, and pedestrians.
Correct.
And now, what about pedestrian connection through here?
There is a walkway, and we're gonna have a gate element that's shown in your package, an entrance element, stone walls. And on this side, there is a sidewalk connecting Bryant Circle right here. There are also some small connections here and here. Those are really for exiting, that's required when we get a lot of people here. But that's the connectivity from Bryant Circle, that's the connectivity from Fulton Street.
So, the gates here are only...
The gates here...
To block vehicles in the evenings.
In the evenings.
In the evenings.
Correct, for Mark. Mark wants those to be secure.
So, the others are not pedestrian, they aren't fenced off?
No.
Those are open to the public?
That's correct.
For pedestrian?
That's correct.
Access, okay. What was the verdict on that neck down of the driveway?
Well, they wanted us to make this 25 feet, which would have killed this tree. And so, I went in there and just kinda tried to push them a little bit to ask them if that's really the requirement. And we are not in a high-fire area here. And a lot of those requirements, like a 40-foot inside turning radius, are for roads that are going back to development, you know, so that the trucks can move and also move by each other. We don't have that scenario here. And the purpose of having 25 feet, you know, across here and across here is for two trucks to go by. So, we're just gonna have a little stop sign almost here. You go first, then I'll go, kinda thing.
Had you thought of making that a one-way and you could narrow the whole...
Hadn't thought of it.
It might help on your impervious surface and...
Yeah, we have, you know, the public's gonna come in here, you know, to use, you know, the administrative facilities, the principles right there. So, I guess people can come in and then go out that way. I don't see why that's necessarily a problem.
Mark?
I think that's something we can certainly study, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question on the hardscape material, generally for the walkways and the patios. I would like to see more permeable surfaces in there. Is there a reason why it's not?
I'll use the microphone.
No. We'd be happy to explore that, for sure.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That was my impression too, when I looked at the plans, looking at all these hard surfaces, and I was concerned about the water retention too. I think it's a great improvement from the previous plan. It's a lot more interesting and aesthetically pleasing, and certainly, the design is a great improvement over the existing building.
Can I just jump in and thank Mr. Wild for doing all this work? It's gonna be just gorgeous when you get done, and it's been kind of an eyesore for all these years, so I'm really pleased that you're... I'm just astounded looking through these plans and all the, you know, this huge book that we put together, just the amount of work that goes into just getting to this point where we're ready to go on it. And I really appreciate you doing this, 'cause I think it's gonna really improve that whole corner of Bryant Street and be a real asset for the city. Plus, I look forward to watching the tennis here when you guys are having those tournaments.
Okay, then, if there's no further comments from the commission, let's open up the public hearing at this point. I have a speaker's card from Denise Wiseman.
Hello, good evening. I own the property next to, my name is Denise Wiseman, I live in Upper Ojai, and I own the property next adjacent to the tennis academy. One second. I've written August. Located at 325 Bryant Street, where I've requested to subdivide four lots east of the Fulton Extension. There's gonna create a lot of traffic coming through Fulton. I own both properties on the west and east of Fulton Extension. Also, Bryant Circle, Bryant Street are only M-zone, M1-zone, and you're gonna take away a portion of, by allowing this project, you're gonna take almost two acres of M1-zone and making it... Also, when I acquired the property from the railroad, I was assigned the conditions that were given to the city in order to get the 12,000 square feet street extension. This was signed by the then-mayor, Joe DeVito, on May 26, 1998. The conditions of getting that extension, that street to do the extension, was that the city was gonna build the street within three years of acquiring it. That wasn't done, that was in 1998, that's 13 years later, it hasn't been done. Also, the city was supposed to build the stop, the stops going to the other sides, which was not done. You made me do it, and that cost a lot of money, and I have a legal problem with that. I'm gonna give you a copy.
This is a copy of...
An agreement from the railroad to the city. That was signed, May 26, 1998, where the railroad gave 12,000 square feet for the street extension, but there were conditions that were not met by the city. And when you gave me the approval to do my subdivision for the four lots, you required me, you omitted this, and you gave me a list of very expensive conditions for me to get the four lots subdivided. I would like to know if you're gonna require the same from Mr. Wild to do his project. Are you gonna require dedication of land, like you've asked from me? Curbs, garages, street lights, on and on and on that you have required of me.
Well, I don't think we're the... We can answer that as planning commissions, but maybe we could have staff comment on that. And I believe there's obvious legal issues involved here, but maybe you want to do some clarification?
Mr. Chair, all I would add is that this is also, requires changing lot lines and zoning in general plan, and the city has a fair amount of latitude to make requirements of the applicant. But those requirements are, need to be based on proportionality and nexus and public needs associated with what the city's granting. And I don't, I'm not familiar with Ms. Wiseman's project, but I'm assuming there's differences in what's proposed here and what a normal subdivision that increases development potential, et cetera. So, this, basically, it's a case-by-case. Yes, the city can require things in this sort of legislative act, but they need to be, make sense and be proportionate to the project.
I would concur with that, and also, depending upon the development, I know when this original building was built, there were certain requirements at that time, certain payments into, in lieu fees. There was the Bryant Street traffic mitigation area, that they collect the fees there, plus the regular traffic mitigation fees. But we'll be happy to look at any specific cases, any information that you have.
I think you should look at my file and at my subdivision, and you should compensate me monetarily or take away some of the conditions that I haven't met yet. I've spent over $500,000, so much on the project, and I haven't been able to finish it because the market has changed. It doesn't pay for me to continue the subdivision if I have to spend more money, because the land value has gone more than 50% down. At the time when I required the subdivision, the market was much higher, real estate prices were much higher, and it was okay to spend the money. But now, it's not okay to spend the money to continue the project, but I think the city owes me. I don't know if it was an honest mistake, or they didn't know that I have all this agreement from the railroad.
Excuse me, I think we're digressing a little bit from the item...
Yes, I understand that, but I need to know...
We understand that you have a legitimate concern here.
Yes.
But it needs to be taken up at a different...
I need to know which course to take.
Well, we're gonna discuss this project this evening.
Okay.
So, I think it may have bearing on what your, what your future development of your lots may look like, so...
But also because Fulton, Fulton Street is dividing my property, and it's gonna create a lot of traffic, and I may have a reason to take back the 12,000 square feet that you acquired, because you did not live up to your conditions.
Well, that's, again, you'll have to take that up with the city.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in the public on this Wild project here? I don't see anyone coming forward, so... I don't see anyone coming forward, so...
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, planning commission discussion.
I would like to say, Ms. Wiseman brought up a, an interesting point that we, this is probably a decision that was made long ago when the, the first buildings were built on that site, but we're really taking land out of the M1-zone and changing the zoning there. I don't have a problem with it, but it's something we do need to be aware of.
Well, the current use of the property is consistent with the, kind of, what's being done with schools and with public zoning, and I, I'm happy to see an expansion of a business like this. I would prefer to see something like this than something that is emitting fumes or smells or noise. This seems more consistent with the area, with the athletic club adjacent to it, and the other businesses near there are all storage, so they're not like heavy manufacturing or anything like that.
I like the, I just wanna chime in on the Fulton Street improvements, and I'm in favor of this assigning a proportional, a proportional financial agreement, because I, I can see that it's gonna take some time for Complete Streets to maybe meditate on this a bit and give us direction, give the, give Public Works a direction of how we'd like to move forward on that. So I think that is a, that's a good solution at this point in time, and it, it, it will assure that it will get done as well at some point in time, so...
I'd also like to point out that, as Ms. Wiseman noted, Fulton Street has been in process for quite a while, and there's no guarantee that, you know, if Mr. Wile were to make these improvements, that they would, that there would even be a street there in the future, because it's, we've been talking about it for a long time, and nothing ever happens, seems to happen, so...
That's a good point. I, is there new information floating around from the city on that regard?
Yes, from a public works standpoint, we discussed that with them this week to verify where things stood, and at this point, it is looking at March, April for construction. They have everything in place. It did come before the design review aspect back in 2007, and they're now with their money and everything else, everything is in order, they've been working with Caltrans, and that's the timing that we've been given.
So you're saying that this is actually gonna happen?
That is the information I am getting from...
Okay, and it was new news to me this week as well, so I understand why you're thinking, what you said, what you did, John. Now, with that plan in place, how does that impact input from Complete Streets?
We discussed that at our meeting this afternoon, and the way the condition is written, and I think it's number 24, is, gives the flexibility for it to go to the Complete Streets. We have asked that Greg Grant from Public Works be present at our next meeting and go through, what has already been looked at by the planning commission back in 2007, that approval, and see what we could do that would be more in line with the Complete Streets direction.
Is Ms. Wiseman aware of this?
We've not, I've had no contact with her until tonight.
Yeah, you might wanna let her know. I think her, her concerns may be just mitigated by the completion of the project. I think what her concern was, some of us were here when she presented a project a couple years ago. At the time she presented the project, we were requiring her to do significant improvements to the street, because it's not there. So now that we're gonna put the street, so I think she came in here under the old scenario, so I think it'd be a good idea if we called her and said, hey, let's, let's bring it today, because your expense has just gone down. So, that'd be a good idea.
So, a piece of background on that is, for the planning commissioners that have been around, there was quite a discussion about the design of Fulton Street, and we did discuss that at the Complete Streets Committee today, that we don't really want another Willow Street there, and so we'd like, we'd like to meet with the Public Works Director and talk about how to, how to tame the design and whether that's feasible at this point. So that, I'm sure that's, I expect that's something that will be pursuing in the near future, then, with this coming on in March, and it's on the Complete Street agenda, then, and to carry on the discussions, yeah?
Yes, it is on, yeah, but basically, we're gonna wait and meet with Greg Grant and find out.
Start with Greg?
Yeah, start with him, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, all right. Any further questions for staff, or further comments on the...
I guess the only issue I had was on the, Abe, you had modified condition, or had recommended adding two more possibilities under that condition, number 24, with regards to the Fulton Street extension. Was that something that, that recommendation was done in concert with the applicant? Are they aware of that? I guess one of, one of my concerns would be for Mr. Wile. Obviously, he's got to understand what his financial requirements are gonna be to do this project. To the extent that recommendations are understood by him, and what his commitment may or may not be, would be important.
Mr. Chair Commissioner Becker, are you referring to the possibility for explicitly saying the condition that a fair share contribution would be the way to go?
Yes.
I, we did have a little bit of discussion about it, but the intent was to have the flexibility in there to work that out with Public Works. I don't, from a cost standpoint, we didn't foresee that being more costly to have a fair share contribution. However, could always ask Mr. Wile, but we didn't, we actually foresaw that as potentially being a cost savings, but, but I can't, I don't wanna say that, because we're not positive what the actual numbers would be.
Yeah, I guess my only suggestion is maybe making that one or two, one of maybe two suggestions. That way, there's a, Mr. Wile has an option to, or I'm not really sure, but I would hate to leave that somehow ambiguous.
Well, I think it is still ambiguous until we get more information.
It's a little hard to...
I don't think the intention is to increase the costs. The types of things we were talking about would probably decrease it.
Well, I'm just saying, if I'm the developer, ambiguity is a problem, regardless of what your intentions are, so...
Well, I mean, he can start with the design that's already been done, and what I'm saying is, I don't see us increasing that.
Well, it seems to me that since you have a, Public Works has a date, too, of March or April, this should be cleared up before you begin your project, too. So if there's any issues, you could readdress it, I suppose.
Please, yeah.
Just because it is, it is very hard for me to understand how this is gonna work, but because that, that land where the Fulton Street extension would go, right now is a hill, it's a mound. So are we, are we kind of saying that the city's gonna, I don't know if the city or Caltrans is gonna build it, and then come and give me a bill and say, Mark, this is what, this is what the sidewalks and gutters cost?
That's, that's the issue I'm bringing up, is what you're saying right now, and I just wanna make sure you are understanding this better, before you, we conditioned something, so all of a sudden you're walking out of here going, I don't know what just happened.
Right, right.
But you get a bill and you're going, oh, now I know what just happened, I'm not sure I agree with it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Because the grading, I, I mean, just looking at that, where it is, you can't put gutters and sidewalks in, it's a, it's a hill, so it just seems like a, what's that?
There's, this is the design.
Oh, from the city?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
So you should get a copy of that, so you could understand, it's been designed.
I probably still wouldn't understand it.
Okay. Yeah.
So does that mean that, that...
I think what you'll find is Public Works probably has some numbers around this thing right now.
Okay.
Probably a good idea to, for you to go meet with them, or your architect, and really get an understanding of what the costs are projected to be, under a fair share agreement.
Okay.
And then, you know, you can kind of take, work with staff to take it from there. Their, the intention is not to increase your costs at all, but I think you should get an idea of what that's gonna cost.
Okay, and, and the question, Carl Pope actually called me, because he owned the property before, and he said he put $35,000 into it, and, and so he was saying, Mark, you shouldn't have to pay also the second time, so I said, look, that's his deal, but is, would that be a credit toward streets and, or curbs and gutters?
You wanna, we should have staff explain that to you, how developers there put money to funding for future improvements. You wanna take, take that?
I'll try, and Ms. McLaughlin can correct me, Mr. Chair Commissioners, it may be that what Mr. Pope contributed to was the Bryant Area Industrial Plan fees, which is just a condition of approval for developing in that specific area of the city. Whether those funds are applied to the Fulton Street extension is a question that's a little trickier, having to do with the improvements that we're envisioning in that plan. If, if those fees could apply to the project, then I think that would be part of the discussions with Public Works.
Fine, I'm comfortable with that, if we could say, subject to talking to Public Works and, again, I'm not gonna get started right away. I just wanted to make sure, it's a, it's an expensive project, and it's, you know, public art, and it's, I don't want it to be tipped out of balance, if possible, but I know I need to, to contribute something, so I'm willing to, very willing to do.
You're, and you're welcome to come to the meeting, also, the Complete Streets meeting and Public Works Director's...
Only if Ms. Wiseman's gonna be there, that's... I'm joking, kidding. All right, I will, I'm sure I will.
Mr. Chair, Ms. McLaughlin had a great point, is that this project, if it goes forward from tonight, would go, goes to City Council as well, and, and as she just pointed out to me, that gives some time to possibly get some more specificity on this by meeting with Public Works.
Right, right, good, that's a point well taken, because I think that we, there is time gonna be required to, to detail these, these comments out, and, and the direction, especially with the, the street improvements, so... Well, Commissioners, further discussion. Then I think we're ready to propose a motion, which basically is how we as a commission feel it should go forward, and it's gonna end up at City Council for their approval or not. So this is really just a, it's, it's, we're adopting a recommendation. A resolution is the formal term. So in, in general, if I could, if I could sort of wrap it up, it looks like the conditions of approval are pretty close with the, with the modification of the November 14 memo. And I think that was, I think that basically covers it. Right. And the addition of the fire, fire department memo? All right, I guess that's me, then. Do you wanna run with that, Paul, or? Sure. You're up for it. So I'll move to adopt PC Resolution Number 11-05, recommending that the City Council want to adopt the required findings for design review permit, DRP 11-05, CUP 11-03, lot merger, TPM 11-01, general plan amendment, GPA 11-01, zone change, ZC 11-01, lot line adjustment, LLA 11-01, tree permit, T11-19, and certificate of compliance, CC 11-01, including the SEQA findings, with the modifications to the findings as noted in staff's memo of November 14th. To adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for DRP 11-05, CUP 11-03, TPM 11-01, GPA 11-01, ZC 11-01, LLA 11-01, T11-19, and CC 11-01, and three, approve DRP 11-05, CUP 11-03, TPM 11-01, GPA 11-01, ZC 11-01, LLA 11-01, T11-19, and CC 11-01, subject to the conditions of approval as modified by staff's memo of November 14th.
I will second that. Sorry, do we wanna add those conditions you were suggesting to condition number 24?
Commissioners, my, my understanding from Public Works is that the way they're written right now, they give enough flexibility to continue the discussion without adding specificity, but we can do it.
I'm comfortable with the wording.
Me, too.
So the, the motion has been seconded by Commissioner Merk. Rule call?
Luckman?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklund?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we have, that's a lot of permits. You know, we've been going at this a while, so we're gonna take five minutes off. You know, we've been going at this a while, so we're going to take five minutes off. Okay. Okay. And that is the subject being Planning Commission Recommendations Regarding the Building Code Update and Related Matters. So let's hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. As you recall, this project started its life as a simple update to the building code. And then as a result of our public outreach and some of the earlier workshops, we had it kind of expanded into a discussion of the whole planning and building process and ways in which we can approve it. And so at the, at the last meeting, I think you discussed some of the broader issues, like making sure that we have due process, making sure that we have better policy clarification, streamlining the process for the benefit of the applicants. And, and so now we're back to discussing the building code update itself. And the final chapter to discuss is the International Property Maintenance Code. And so Steve Stewart, I think, did a really good job of following up on your direction to have a side-by-side comparison so you can see where the various provisions of that code are derived from. And so he's here with us today, along with Brian Meadows, to walk you through that.
Great, all right. Steve, would you like to make an introduction?
Be happy to. I guess my, my goal this evening is, is maybe just respond to any questions you may have, but I thought it may help you just to kind of understand how I proceeded through doing this particular analysis, because it's not an exhaustive analysis by any stretch of the imagination. Essentially what I did is I took each section of the International Property Maintenance Code, I read it, and used my thirty years of experience to go through my index of all the various codes and said, yes, there is a code section that's similar to this in this code. And then I went and found it. And at that point, if, if, if the comparison fit, I used it. But I did not do an exhaustive search through every one of the codes to try to find an analysis. So there is some criteria there. But even with that methodology that I used, it took quite a long time to go through this process. So I just want to let the commission know that, you know, we did some analysis, but we didn't do an exhaustive analysis of comparison. So there may be some additional code sections, I'm sure there are, that we could compare to and, and discuss. But I felt after putting the document together and after reading through it several times, I felt it was probably what you were looking for as far as a comparison document. Of course, some of the code sections in the International Property Maintenance Code, there is no code comparison that would fit. And so in those particular cases, I actually, I would note that there is no comparison. So it's really a brand-new code section.
Okay.
So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have on that. The other thing I did want to mention is that we do have a few proposed amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code. And, and looking at those today, I did not include those in the comparison document. But looking at those today, they're really comparisons that are similar to the code section in the old Uniform Housing Code for substandard conditions. And so I would say all of those particular code sections would have a comparable section in the old Uniform Housing Code. And we could, we could discuss that if, if you'd like.
So that's amendment to what we have in front of us at this point, in addition to?
It was a recommended amendment in the original ordinance.
I see. So has any language been altered of this International Property Maintenance Code as we're reading it at this point? You know, deletions, additions, or is this straight as it's proposed in, in the code itself?
Well, maybe I ought to just speak to those proposed amendments that we're recommending.
But in what we have read, what's here, what we've been exposed to? Yeah, I mean, as I read the International Property Maintenance Code, as you have it outlined here, at every point it says IPMC. So that is directly verbatim out of the code itself.
Nothing has been altered, deleted, data. Changed, deleted, anything.
So at this point, we will bring up the amendments or the additions too. Okay. You want to address those?
Sure, I'd be happy to. In our proposed amendment, there's three or four clarifications for various definitions that were in the old, what I'm going to call Old Uniform Housing Code, the nineteen ninety-seven Uniform Housing Code, that were not as clear as we would like to see them in the International Property Maintenance Code. And those were the definition for a substandard building, which would be a new section added to the International Property Maintenance Code of three-ten. The inadequate sanitation of a building, which would be a new code section, three-ten point one. Hazards in buildings, which would be an added section of three-ten point two. And hazardous in, or in sanitary premises, which would be an added section of three-ten point three. And then the last one in that series would be improper occupancy, which is three-ten point four. And essentially, all of those sections, I'm sorry?
Where are those?
Those would be in your original ordinance documents.
Do we have, do we have it here?
Not in the document you have today. There was been previous documents that you were given.
So, so you're not talking about this? It's in a different document?
It's in addition to, I'm talking about the, the proposed ordinance change that we started with Title Nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I recall going through it, but I don't, I don't recall the details.
Absolutely. It's only a couple of pages right here. We could do that, since we're just talking about those amendments. These, these two pages won't show. There, there is one additional amendment and it's dealing with overcrowding definitions in the, in the proposed amended ordinance. The language in the International Property Maintenance Code is a little bit ambiguous. We would like a little more clarity to that and we've proposed a language in the ordinance to clarify that definition.
When you say, "we want clarity," and you say that a few times.
I'm talking about staff.
Staff, and you're asking that of us or of?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, you said, as far as the amendments go, are there other amendments that are happening at some other level that you're, that are kind of being passed down to you that you're relaying any information on? In other words, the code right now, we've got that book and you've done a great job of comparing it. I appreciate that. Are you finding that there's going to be a lot of changes to that outside of, you know, what we do? That are kind of coming down that you're hearing about?
Well, we'll have the next code cycle in an additional three years. And, and at this point, I can't tell you exactly what, what those proposed changes are. But usually, there is not a lot of changes in the, the housing type maintenance codes that we, we have coming down. So I would not anticipate a lot of change in that regard.
And then, you know, this is not a requirement by the state to adopt.
That is correct.
What has been the feedback of other communities, as far as you know?
Most communities have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code because in the past, they adopted the Uniform Housing Code. And that's no longer a code that is being maintained. And now it's, what is it, over twelve years old?
So why is the state, so then why is the state not requiring it?
Well, of course, I can't speak for the, the state, but I can, I can give you my opinion if you'd like. I believe they feel the language is adequate in the current Health and Safety Code to deal with some of these issues, is the only thing I could presume. And I think they are giving the local jurisdictions some flexibility to adopt their own regulations in regards to maintenance type of code issues.
So these amendments that we're looking at are directly referenced from the formerly adopted Uniform Housing Code? That, these definitions?
In context. And they're not exact word, the exact wording that was in the Housing Code, but in context.
Okay.
Can you explain the California Energy Code? What is that?
The California Energy Code is the, the code that regulates the energy efficiency standards in new construction and additions to buildings. It includes insulation requirements within buildings, light efficiency requirements within buildings, air conditioning and heating efficiency requirements within buildings, both residential and non-residential. And it is a state-mandated code and regulation, and we are not recommending any amendments to that code.
And does that apply to remodeling or just new construction?
Yes. It would, it would apply to additions, alterations, and in some cases, minor repairs, but mainly alterations and additions to buildings.
So by adopting the the California Energy Code, Title twenty-four, right?
Yeah, Title twenty-four, Part Six, yes.
Does that become? How does that work into maintenance? Because I can understand it in new construction, you're going to be required to do the latest energy requirements. How does Title twenty-four work into a maintenance code? Why are they not allowed to, would they, are they going to be required to upgrade to do glazing and insulating values?
Really, it's a separate and distinct document. It's not really affiliated with the International Property Maintenance Code
Okay.
whatsoever. It's just the preceding code within the context of the, the ordinance, the way it's written right here.
Okay, so it really has nothing to do with the?
It's not a part of the property maintenance.
Just wanted to clarify that.
It's a separate, distinct code, Part Six.
Okay. Got it. All right. Well, there was a lot of material here and, again, appreciate your work on it. I, I think we probably have questions from around the, around the table here. Does anyone like to speak up or?
I don't really have questions as much as I have an opinion. And I just, you know, some of these things in here are, I look at them and go, okay, I know we've covered that in other areas. It's kind of what you're saying, is the state is probably feeling that what they have out there is, at least to some degree, somewhat adequate, or perhaps this is part of a longer-term plan to eventually get all this adopted and then go to it, or make it mandatory at some future date. But, you know, I, I really don't personally like the idea of creating an entire set of codes. And I really hesitate to want, to even want to do that, given that we have a tremendous amount of codes and requirements already. And I particularly don't like the idea of creating this whole other section, which you've said throughout this, that there's no other comparison, that's what you're kind of referring to, because it's not there with regards to maintenance. And I think it really scares people and that's, they're just not, you know, used to seeing that, number one. It is a whole new idea that's going on. And it basically is forcing a requirement on people that doesn't currently exist. And that's, to me, disturbing. And I don't think this is, personally don't think this is a good time to be putting this before some of our citizens or any of them right now. And as much as I do, I read through this and some of them are, you know, just basically repeating what we already have or, you know, trying to organize it perhaps better. repeating what we already have, or, you know, trying to organize it perhaps better, is the way I looked at a lot of it. You know, it kind of reads pretty well, actually reads pretty well, and the way it's put together. The document itself, I think scares a lot of people, and I think there's probably pretty good reason for that. And this particular document, I know, is the one that scared a lot of people in this community.
If, if I could just interject, you know, in my, in my mind, the dilemma that we have is that, as I understand it, this code replaces what we had before in terms of the Uniform Housing Code, and was the methodology for addressing issues that come up in, in already-built, inoccupied buildings. And so, you know, the question I would have is, if the Uniform Housing Code is going to go away, and we don't, and we no longer have a tool for addressing tenant issues and things like that, what, what do we have? So, you know, in that light, when I looked through this, I was looking for, are there things in it that are a big red flag, or if not, you know, if there are repeats of things that are, that were in the old Uniform Housing Code, or things that are in the codes that are mandatory, maybe this is the tool that we need in order to, to deal with those kinds of problems. So, you know, I understand the dilemma, and I certainly understand the fear, because I've been to those meetings, but it, but I'm, I'm hesitant to get in a position where we eliminate the capability of addressing issues that come up in already-built buildings, and we don't have a tool to replace it.
I have a question, and I, we may have gone over this before. So what would trigger the official to respond to a situation? Is it complaint-driven, once again?
If it, if there's something in the Property Maintenance Code that would trigger me to, to go out and do some type of code enforcement, and use the Property Maintenance Code to back it up, then I would have a legal document. Other than that, I wouldn't be able to do anything.
Right. But typically, what is the trigger for you to go out there? Is it due to a complaint, or?
The, the trigger is a, is a written complaint, or if I see somebody building something, and I know they don't have a building permit, and I can stop and ask them if they-
Now, does the building permit overlap then with the maintenance? I guess, I guess where I'm a little confused, and maybe this is where there's a little ambiguity, you know, with the public, is, is there a, is there a, like, on-the-books procedure? In other words, you have to get, you know, two complaints or three complaints before you go out and check, or is it one complaint, and then you go out and, and follow through with, depending on what the situation is?
Yeah, it, it's one written complaint.
One written complaint.
And I'll go out and investigate it.
And that's what you've been so, doing so far with the, the existing code?
That's what I've been instructed to do, and that's, that's the way I treat it, code enforcement, right now. I know there's a lot of code enforcement out there that doesn't get touched, because I don't have complaints on it. But I'm just doing it the city council's will.
Thank you.
I can help with some, with some clarity on that, is that, really, this document here is for health and safety issues in buildings. And I would say, in most jurisdictions, and, and I've, I've helped Brian on occasions up here, doing inspections, so I'm somewhat familiar with, with, with your situation up here, is that the majority of the kind of complaints, kind of complaints that would, you would utilize the International Property Maintenance Code would come from renters who, property owners, are unwilling to make repairs to the building, and they actually then turn in the complaints, and then we would go out, and then enforce that based on this document. If we don't have this document, then Brian would have to rely back on the state codes, which are not as detailed and, and as clear and concise as this document is, to assist with the maintenance. And, and what I mean by that, it's, it's very, is very general. It says, "Health and safety issues that, that are lack of this, or lack of that." And so it's not specific requirements that he can go to and say, "Meet in this compliance." So it leaves a lot of, of interpretation of what those requirements are.
I wholeheartedly disagree with you. Okay? I have a tremendous background in property management, and that is just not correct. Because, number one, the specifics are in case law, and I can tell you that every landlord out there knows what their requirements are, and they don't have to look at the Housing Code to know those things. They've been established by the courts. Okay? And if you're willing to violate those, you're in big trouble. So there's plenty of power, and that power, by the way, that power is given to someone like Brian, ultimately. Because it's been done, it's been set forth by the courts. So, you know, that's, it's really easy to throw out that kind of generalization and say, "That's the way it is." That is, in fact, not the way it is, which is why we write very specific, very detailed leases when we're landlords. We know what our requirements are, and we know if we step, if we go outside those requirements, we're in big trouble. Tenants have tremendous rights in this state, particularly with regards to property maintenance. And I'm sorry, you're not going to be able to convince me tonight otherwise, because you say it's too general at state level. It is not general at the state level. It is extremely specific. And quite frankly, reading through this didn't do anything for me with regards to the way the landlord-tenant relationship is. I think that's probably one of the worst examples of the use of this code. And I'll tell you what one of the best examples is, is look at Section one-oh-two-point-two, where there's maintenance, and there's no comparison. If I'm any one of the hotel, apartment, or other owners in this, in this city, I would be scared to death of that. Because what it does, Commissioner Nolan touched on it, it gives you the right to walk into any building and say, "This isn't up to working order, and so I'm going to come in and require you to fix all these things." That's basically what this does. And I'm sorry, I am not for giving anyone that kind of power. Because I can tell you right now, I know a lot of the places here in the city of Ojai, where you could go in and really cause a financial disruption, and, and basically shut down some of these things. And I appreciate where some of these people are coming from. They've read this. And I'm sorry, it's way too, it's way too ambiguous to give one person that kind of authority. And we are now complaint-driven, that doesn't mean five years from now, we're not going to be complaint-driven. This doesn't, this, by the way, doesn't even touch on that. Even if you're complaint-driven, you still have the right, as a building official, to do this. It's just the policy of the city that we're complaint-driven. Okay? That doesn't change the authority that our building officials are given by the adoption of this Property Maintenance Code. And I think there's going to be tremendous fallout from this over the next few years. And that's what I don't, I don't, I'm not particularly comfortable with. I'd rather see what everyone else does first, and then decide whether we want to adopt sections of this, or parts of this, or really abbreviated sections of this. That's where I'm coming from. But I, as a landlord for years, a lot longer than most people in this room, I do take exception to that comment. That is off the mark.
Well, I'm in agreement with Troy on some of this. I understand a lot of it, but then I, I, you know, I read some of these clauses, like, okay, it's one-oh-four-point-three, right of entry, says, "Where it is necessary to make an inspection to enforce the provision of this code, or whenever the code official has reasonable cause to believe that there exists in a structure upon a premises, a condition violation of this code, the code official is authorized to enter the structure or premises at reasonable times to inspect or perform the duties imposed by this code." I, you know, like I said, I, I understand, like, what's behind a lot of this, but I'm not sure that there's a procedure that's set up, and I think that is where a good percent of the public is very concerned. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about it, too. I don't know that that's the answer, but it may be a direction that we may, we want to look at, and define what that procedure is, like, you know, who is the official? What, is it, you know, one letter of complaint, or is it three letters of complaint, then it goes to city council or not, and I'm not sure? But something where it's clear as to if it's going to happen, how it's going to happen. Takes the question out.
I think, I think that that's a, a pretty on-point comment, because I think in this whole discussion, not just this particular code, I think it's more-
Mm-hmm, in general.
-controversial, because this one's an optional code, but even with the codes that are not optional, there's a difference between the toolbox and how the toolbox is used.
Yes.
And the toolbox is the toolbox that's set by the state and available to us. But how it's used is the policy that's set by the council, which I think is what you're talking about, when you talk about procedure. So, so I think that's a, that's a good comment for us to take back and, and work on a little bit. And I think, I think also there may be, I think it might be helpful to get input from our city attorney's office as to what legal basis we need as a city to enforce code versus civil code enforcement when there's a tenant landlord dispute. Because I think there is, there's a little bit of difference there, that, and I, and I'm not clear enough on that myself to address it. So, so I'm thinking that we probably need to take this back and, and have a more thorough discussion of the procedure, and also the legal issues.
Yeah, like in this one-oh-four-point-three that Kathy was quoting, it's not clear what would constitute a violation of this code. I mean, would it be an emergency health and safety situation, or it would be just suspicion that they had done some interior changes, and you felt like you needed to go check it out? I mean, it says, "If entry is refused, the code official shall have recourse to the remedies provided by law to secure entry." So when would that be triggered, that you would go to that extreme to do that?
The first, the first thing I would do is knock on the door and ask permission, that I see an unsafe situation going on, or there's some, some type of construction, there's a big pile of drywall in the front yard, or where I can see where they've stripped out a house or something. And if that doesn't work, and they refuse, you know, anybody can say, "Please leave my property," and I would be glad to, I'd just turn around and walk away. And then, we only resort to the requirements of, of the law, only under extreme pressure. You know, if somebody wouldn't cooperate, and there is a hazard, we don't know if they're going to finish the project, put people in there. There's, that, that's just an example.
I think this is an example where it's so ambiguous, and people are very nervous about it, and they're not comfortable with this. It's not specified clearly when, I mean, what if somebody starts some interior project that's not permitted, that they go on a trip, you come to check it out, they're not there? I mean, you know, I could envision some very awkward situations around this, because it's not specified.
Yeah. There, there is a, there is a lot of remodeling going on right now, that does not require When you, you know, the electrical plumbing, mechanical do, but you can change your tub, you can change your toilet, you can change out different, put in new cabinet, all that can be done. A lot of people do that, and they don't touch anything else.
But you're already allowed to, this is already covered under city ordinance.
Right.
What you're saying, your ability to go in, shut up, put a red tag on someone that's already started, that's already covered under city ordinances.
In the building code?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but that, yeah.
It's already there.
It's fourteen years, well, on the new code.
It's already there. We're not talking about anything that isn't already in code.
And I guess my confusion a little bit, too, is, all right, so for instance, you see drywall, drywall out at the front of a house, so to me, that would indicate they're either remodeling, you know, whether it's, they've got a permit or not, but how does that tie in with the, with the maintenance code?
Alterations to the building would typically fall under the state California Building Code, and in the same procedure, and you can see it in Section one-oh-four-point-six of the California Building Code, right after the Property Maintenance Code section, the wording is almost exactly the same, and that comes straight out of the California Building Code. So, if, if the building official has reason to believe that there is construction going on, there's some very clear guidelines under state statute, and, and cases that have been litigated on what public officials, what access public officials have in regards to access to property. Simply, the building official has access to common area, which is normally to the front door, and to the sidewalk from the public way to the front door, assuming that there is no locked fence or gate or something like that, can't jump over that fence or gate. But assuming you have public access to that, a building official can go up and knock on the door, identify themselves, under state statute, we're, we're required to identify ourselves, and have identification to show who we are, and instate our reason for being there and request an inspection. It has to be to an adult, and to somebody that has presumed authority of the property. If, for whatever reason, they refuse access to the building official for that purpose, at that point, the building official has to stop his investigation and leave the property. If, if there is overriding consideration to pursue that, that really falls under the purview of the city attorney. Typically, in most cities, the building official would have to meet with the city attorney, describe the conditions of, of what was observed during the course of that. If the city attorney felt that it was at a reasonable level to pursue, then the city attorney could prepare what is known as an administrative warrant. We typically call it a inspection warrant, and that has to go before the magistrate or the judge to approve. If, if the judge approves that, typically, those inspection warrants require a twenty-four-hour notice. So the building official would have to post that, make, let the property owner know that they have an inspection warrant, give them twenty-four hours for access to get in there. And that's, that's how that works. Now, most, most building departments do not utilize that latter enforcement tool on a regular basis. Now, I'm sure there's some jurisdictions that do, but in our regional area, if one happens every five years, I'd be surprised. But in some areas, it happens more.
Right. And that was for building, but not for the maintenance, which happens to be complaint-driven?
It would be the same procedure for-
Same procedure, okay.
-a maintenance violation.
Okay.
If there was a violation of the International Property Maintenance Code, whatever that violation may be, and it wasn't covered under one of the other state mandated codes, the same procedure would work.
Okay, thank you.
It's the exact same language.
Clearly, you're not ready to act.
Clearly, you're not ready to act. I, what I'd like to do is, I think there's about four things that came up that we need to get back to you with more information on. One is, what is the status of this code with respect to other cities within the county and the county itself? The second is, what kind of procedure, as Commissioner Nolan was raising, would be used for using the code? The third is, is legal issues and input from the city attorney's office, and kind of a subset that, of that, which is the question that I raised initially, which is, what happens if we don't have a uniform housing code? Because we're, you know, that's going away, so if we don't have that anymore, and I don't, I don't think we can answer that for you in a satisfactory way right now. So I'd rather take the time to look into those things before we go anywhere with this.
I think the, the intent of this code is for the public welfare, health and safety. That's the intent. I think it gets lost in verbiage to a degree, because there's so much specificity going on here, that it's overwhelming to, to look at it. And it also lends itself to susceptibility to abuse. A neighbor who has a disagreement with another neighbor calls the city and says, "Hey, this guy paints cracking on his siding, it's been that way for 15 years." I mean, that, it gets that specific in there. My point is, is that it can be abused, and I think there's an inherent fear on that level with, when you're looking at something like this, and that it's important that we look further into this code and to understand that there is an, there is an appeal process. And for me, that is what provides the check and balance to this whole thing, because without it, it just becomes another police enforcement code. Without a check and balance in place, which is provided by a Board of Appeals, and it's outlined here fairly specifically, the, I would agree that I wouldn't want to go here either, but I think I'd be willing to take the step based on how that Board of Appeals is formulated, and who's on that Board of Appeals, because it's going to lend the check and balance to this whole thing. Without it, we have nothing. So as I, as I think along those lines, and we've had discussions with outreach groups in the community on this issue, it'd certainly be important that a contractor would be involved in, on this Board of Appeals. It certainly would want a, a member of the Board of Realtors on here, and other like professionals who have, can provide overview and a professional assessment and valuation of this. So for me, that is, that provides the piece of regulation that, that makes this thing, whole thing work. Otherwise, it falls on its face, because it just is too much power, it's too much authority. There has to be an instrument, a mechanism in there that allows the public to say, "I don't, I disagree with you, I don't like that, and this is why," and, and that, and so on and so forth. And I think that this is explicitly outlined here, but it's easily overlooked with all the other detail that, that's written on here. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand that point, how important the appeal process is to this code. And you also see that appeal process in the CBC and the CRC and everything else, the International Building Codes. It's part and parcel of our code enforcement. So just, just want to bring that to our attention.
The other thing I want to, that I want to bring up is, some of these, I mean, some of these things in here, if you really read through them, if you have to read them like three, three or four times with an example in mind, you know, I, we're, we're probably on the verge of either losing our redevelopment areas completely, or perhaps retaining them completely. Yeah. And I can't help but think that somehow this, the presentation of this code doesn't play into the fact that that whole thing, no matter what, in the next 10 years, is going to change. And so, as we have experienced in our own community, we have buildings that have remained vacant. And some of those buildings, and not even the extreme examples, like, you know, the, if you've actually looked at the bowling alley and been in it, it's a mess. It's, it's really, it would, could easily fall under imminent danger if you walk in there. But the ones that are borderline, that aren't so bad, they just look bad, those could also be, fall under some of these paragraphs. And if you take some of these things, it's interesting to me that about 80% of this, there actually is a comparable code that actually already exists, and doesn't even go away with the California Housing, the Housing Code. In other words, you're covered through some other mechanism, either through city ordinance or through a state, another state code. About 85% of this document is already there. So if you parse that out and you start looking at what they're adding, you take a really good look at that, and what it speaks to is forcing building owners to do something with their building. And while that, on the surface, seems like it might be health and safety, you have to kind of wonder if that isn't. And if it's a new, if it's going to go in the direction of a new way of, of basically forcing owners to either get out or get rid of it. And that's what, I see a lot of that kind of threading through this document, just, you know, closing of vacant structures and imminent danger and things like that. And I don't, you know, again, I'm, Brian's a pleasure to work with, but if I'm in the Ventura County, and the inspector I have to deal with sometimes, I wouldn't want that guy having this power, no way. First of all, the guy didn't know he's doing half the time. And I can see him citing some of these codes and issuing a requirement, and you're going, "What are you talking about?" And he'll, you know, and he could actually cite some of this stuff and back, and literally, it could be a requirement. And that, then it becomes a disclosure issue for real estate agents? I mean, I just see it as a, really, I just see it as a really ugly piece of, of drafting, really ugly, because it's, it's got detail and then it doesn't. And where it doesn't, it scares me. So.
Any more opinions? Well, I think Rob has created a list to go from here, I think we should probably explore that. I don't, I should put it before the commissioners unless we're in unanimity on this. I, I still have questions. I don't know, should we go around the table and see how we'd like to proceed with, at this point, or should we just hold off commissioners?
What do you think? What are we?
I'm not ready to take any action on this at all at this point, there's just too many questions on it, so.
Yeah, I have questions, too, that I'd like to sort out.
I agree, I'm not ready to proceed with this.
Troy mentioned the timing, and the timing is, is probably the worst time that you could do this. In, in this economy, and right now, and I've been talking to experts, while I presented the, the chart the other day at the commission meeting, we, we probably aren't looking at a recovery, we're looking at a whole new level. And I don't, I don't like the timing of it, and secondly, I don't like passing something that immediately makes a, a whole sector of the citizenship illegal. Whether someone reports on them or not, it's just a, it's somehow just not right to, you know, if you know that there's, you pass this and there's going to be 3,000 structures or 300 structures that are, are not complying with it, but you're going to ignore it unless someone points it out, there's just philosophically, I have a problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm in agreement, and then I, I'm wondering, you know, Troy, you've mentioned that somewhere between 80, 85% of what's in here is covered under other state code. It would be, I'm, I'm not saying to go out and do a big report, but it'd be interesting to see what items are covered under other state code and what remains.
You know, I, I just think, to me, it's a, yeah, I mean, you know, you think that when you read it? You think, I mean, that, that whole section on imminent danger, there's no direct code that talks about, in the California Building Code, I think, that talks about imminent danger. However, there's ordinances and other codes that aren't called imminent danger that do cover that, that gives, you know, Brian the authority to shut down a building because he, you know, after an earthquake, all these other things, or the fire department or whoever. So even though there's not a direct correlation, which you, you point out in your analysis, yeah, it's still covered. I mean, he, you could probably give me 10 examples of where that particular example is covered through some other mechanism. So even though we're looking at it and saying there's no comparison, well, there really is, it's just not a direct comparison. And, you know, and you pointed out in the beginning, that where there isn't one, you need to provide one. So, but if you, again, there's so much of it is, is already there, that's why I look at it as just an interesting instrument. And the more you look at it, the more you, I feel, I think the concerns of the people that are concerned about it. You know, you've got to put yourself in their shoes. What if you owned a hotel and it's been there for 100 years? You could walk into a number of buildings in this city and find hundreds of things that need to be dealt with. That's a scary proposition if this is adopted. Well, you know, not with Brian here, but somebody else in the future, certainly.
Brings up an interesting question. I mean, we have in place the Uniform Housing Code officially at this point, because until we adopt a new code or let it go, is that correct? Or is it, is it now defunct, just be?
It's, that's a good question. I think that's one of the questions that, that's sort of the question I was asking, that I think I needed an attorney to answer, but it isn't being maintained. So there, you know, we adopted the 1987 Uniform Housing Code, and, you know, it's future updates, but it's no longer being maintained, so where are we? I don't know. That's a good question.
It's very nebulous.
Well, then, you know, here's my, here's the issue. It's no longer going to exist, so why isn't the state making this mandatory if it's so, if it's needed so much? And I think, I mean, I agree with you, the reason that it's not being mandated is because it's already covered in some other code or respect, largely. That's the only thing I could think of. Otherwise, the state, are you think, do you think the state of California would actually say, "You know what? We're just going to let that sun set and not worry about it?"
Recommendation, maybe help a little bit. Why don't we do a, a report back to you in regards to exactly what code sections that would cover maintenance in the California Health and Safety Code? So you actually know essentially what is on the, on the books in regards to maintenance requirements. And if you feel that those are adequate for, for Ojai in regards to enforcing maintenance type requirements, then, then the need to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code goes away, in my mind. And I think that, that I sense is somewhat what you're struggling with in that regard, and we tried to get to it to some degree with this comparison, and, and I think Commissioner Becker is absolutely correct. There's probably close to, you know, 80% of the codes that can be covered in some other of the state mandated codes already, but there's that 20% that is, that is not. And some of those are clearly a, a situation where insanitary conditions, health and safety types of issues, you may want to look at. And I think maybe that would help you bring this together a little bit. And, and we can, we can easily bring that back to you, it won't take a whole lot of work to pull that together, and I think that may, that may help. It's kind of a, it's a different direction than what we're recommending to you, but then that at least gives you an alternative.
And what is the reference code you're going to be looking at?
It's, it's not only a code, it's really the health and safety state provisions, and I can't remember the, the actual title number, but it's 18 something, something, something in the Health and Safety Code. And actually, there's provisions in there that deal with maintenance of substandard buildings. And, and I'll have to do a little research on it, it's been a while since I've utilized that. You know, to speak briefly, and of course, I always refer to the city attorney on this, but I have been involved in some cases where codes have not been maintained, and the court has basically thrown those out. So I, I would be very apprehensive to recommend to you to adopt the 1997 Uniform Housing Code when it's not being maintained, just for that reason. Clearly, that's a question you propose to your city attorney, and he, of course, is the one who made that recommendation to you, but that would be my concern as your consultant in regards to that, so. That may help.
Right. I think it will. I mean, I think we're all agreeing.
Wouldn't it be more straightforward, though, to, to point out what you want to add that's not already in adopted code?
Well, I, I think we need to kind of regroup here a little bit, I'm sensing we need to regroup here a little bit, and I think if we bring back to you the Health and Safety Code requirements, that is state mandated, I mean, that can be enforced by the city today, right now. If there's provisions of the International Property Code that you do like, then maybe we can just make some kind of a, a City of Ojai Housing Code and add some sections that you would like when you have the basic state mandated regulations in front of you a little bit.
I think it'd be interesting to, to hear what, more what the city would like, or the, you know, Brian would like, you know, than us, coming from us, if he understands the, those state provisions, what is lacking that would help him or, you know, in enforcement or what needs to be done in terms of, you know, doing your job, Brian, so.
I, I would like to have everything at my disposal to use, which I use very seldom. A lot of the, a lot of the, the code, it's just not, you know, it doesn't happen here. This is a, this is a, we don't live in a really super poor neighborhood where we have substandard conditions all over the place. There's maybe two buildings in town that I know of that are substandard right now, and I'm working with the people that own them.
Well, to me, what would be interesting, Brian, is, how long have you been, you've been here quite a while? How many years, a city?
16 years.
16 years? You know, examples of where you've had to or wanted to enforce, have an action, or take an enforcement action, where you didn't have something to support the action? I mean, what, you know, do you, are there any specific examples where you didn't have a code or something that you could rely upon?
There isn't. There was always something in the code to use, just like the inspection warrant. I've used that several times over those years, like Steve said, you very seldom need it, but if somebody absolutely refuses to let you on a property, and you get more than one, you know, people are complaining, and they don't want to cooperate or anything, then I tell them, "That's what I'm going to do, because I need to document exactly what you have on your property," and that's what I do, I document what they have on their property. And if, if it's not creating And if, if it's not creating a hazard, or it's a accessory building, or it's something, you know, building without permit, their main structure that they live in, I'm not going to bother them. I'm just going to document it, put it in a file.
Yeah, I just got to wonder if we shouldn't focus on the things we need to adopt right now? And quit, you know, in my mind, just, you know, to, to some degree, we're spending money on an education for ourselves, which is interesting. You know, cut our losses now, get this other stuff completed and off to city council, and perhaps address this the way we've discussed after that's done. And maybe we'll have more clarity by then as well. Because we've already gone through the major sections that are, that are required. All we need to do is come up with one document with all of our, we actually have to go back through it, too, and we can probably get that done. I, I just, you know, that's just, I'm just thinking maybe we should just cut, cut our losses and move on.
It's a, I see what you're saying, Troy. Perhaps we could go with this next step that Mr. Stewart suggested. Let's look at that, those state provisions and continue our education, and just see how far off the mark we are with, you know, with how, you know, Brian, as a building official, would, would feel. I'd really like to hear his opinion on that more than anybody else's at this point, because the man has got sixteen years of experience and deals with this every day. We don't, so.
You know, crafting our own provisions and adding them to the provisions that we're proposing right now. I'm not opposed to that. I don't have every single code at my disposal to use, but I've never used every single code. We just don't, you know, it's a middle-class neighborhood mostly.
But so seldom used as a rule.
Yeah, as a rule, yeah. Yeah, this, this is, covers, you know, wide range.
But this language is, is intimidating to, if you, as you read through it, I mean, I can, I think we're, we're all sensing that.
Well, I'm getting the feeling that everybody thinks that I walk around and...
I don't know, I, I don't think we do. Especially you.
Go around and look for the, the really bad stuff, you know? I'm going to make you tear your house down.
I think we have a lot of...
You know, you understand there are people that actually do want you to do that, which is scary to me. There really are people that want you to do that. I'm glad you don't.
So at this point of the game, Mr. Stewart, come back to us with that provision. We'll look at it, and maybe we can make that call that you suggested at that point in time. We could also maybe tie up the, I would like to tie up the, the state mandated codes at our next session. Let's get that done with. When we're the other, that's got to go forward to city council. But hopefully, we can wrap our mind around this to a point where we'll have, we can make it some sort of judgment call, just a little more information, so. Okay? All right. We do have another item on the agenda. Night is, the night grows on. If I can find it here. It's number five. Oh, wait a minute, that would be, so we're going to go to, yeah, that makes more sense, doesn't it? Yeah. I think we'll take care of issue number six first, yeah. Which is a referral of director's exemption request regarding, is that correct? Design review permit, DE eleven dash two-one?
Director's exemption.
Oh, it should say directors, it says design review permit, should be directors. Referral of director's exemption request regarding design review permit. Okay, DE eleven dash two-one. So, Ann?
Thank you, Chairman. I will try to make this a quick presentation. It's twofold. First, staff would like to have a discussion, a short discussion tonight with the Planning Commission, with whether there is any opportunity to look at possible alternate method for small projects or minor projects. The design review ordinance allows the director to exempt certain projects which are considered minor in nature. Typically, in the past, this is included, say, a multifamily residential property where the addition is at the rear of the property, not visible from the street. In commercial, we've really not had minor alterations that the director has been able to approve. When something goes through for full design review, it's an approximate twenty-five-hundred-dollar application fee, a number of aspects such as public hearing notices, the plans are more detailed, rendering things that way are needed to be submitted. The timing is something like that for a very small project that's straightforward, is probably anywhere from four to eight weeks. And in some cases, when we have a smaller project, a builder that's ready to come in, open up a business, and there's a small alteration they want to do, that timing or the cost may prevent them from doing a type of improvement that may be a design improvement that the commission would like to see go forward. And so we just wanted to see if possibly under the director's portion of your agenda, if there are these small projects, whether the director could come to you, show you the plans, and get a reading from you if you felt that was appropriate, or with conditions it was appropriate. Or if you had issue with it and felt that it deserved the full review of the Planning Commission, then we'd go back to the applicant and state, you know, this is a situation that needs to file for a design review permit application, and we'd proceed ahead that direction. If you felt that it was of a minor nature, that it was something that the director could approve, then we would go forward with, with the applicant and issue a director's exemption and do any appropriate conditioning. That's the first aspect of just general discussion, and you may not want to look at that at this point in time, you know, eleven fifteen at night, and I understand that. The other aspect is I do currently have an application that an applicant wants to remodel the storefront at three twenty-one East Ojai Avenue. It's a new business going into an existing retail space. It's at the end of a row of buildings there. What they're trying to do is mirror the cleaners at the east end of the building, present a new parapet look, a little bit of a column look, and do some improvements that way. I have included plans for you that the applicant has submitted to us, and I would like to try to get a read on that aspect tonight at a minimum. If there's any questions I could answer on either aspect, I'd be happy to try.
Well, this case serves as an example of exactly what you're...
Right. And if you, if you need another one, it has not officially come in at this point, but if you went around the corner from the cleaners, there is a proposed business that we had an interested party come to the counter, and it's the, currently, it's the plush surroundings around the corner gallery, and there's the brick building there, and there's a window that might be proposed for this new business. And that's another situation because of the profile, the frontness, you know, on a major street. We just don't have the ability, based on what the Planning Commission has directed the previous directors, you know, as to what to approve and what couldn't be approved. And we totally understand that, and we want to respect your desires, but we just want to see if this is something where the commission may want to look at for the time being until our codes can be looked at on a broader scale.
Right. Well, I'd love to hear from the Planning Commission, their ideas. Anyone like to step up?
I was thinking, you're the architect. I wanted to hear from you.
That's never happened before. Well, I think it's a great idea that we, I, I think there's a disconnect in, from, from the point of a director's exemption to a full-on design review, and we have these minor projects. Now, Grant, now, I want to qualify this, saying this is a highly sensitive area, so because of that, this corridor and, and what that means to the city here, it's very important that we, as planning commissioners, observe that, evaluate that, and have some sort of process. At the same token, I don't think it does require the full-on design review to look at a facade or a window changeout, as you, as you gave the example of. So I, I'd like to explore that. I, I think it's, it's a, it, there's a need for this type of thing, just for the reasons that you cited, expediting the process, lowering the cost, and getting commerce moving in the town, you know? I think these are all important aspects of that, so. So I guess the, the challenge is, is defining at what point do we decide it becomes design review, or goes back to the, to you, or do we handle it here in, in this new format? But again, just by bringing it before us, it enables us to have that discussion, so I think this is a great, great way to kick it off.
And I wonder if, do we want to define certain locales as being exempt from that or not? For instance, like, say, in the downtown district?
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, even, even though, you know, this is just maybe a slight modification, or even that window on the building around the corner, you know, there's some historical significance in, in some of these areas. So that's just something to think about.
I would like to kind of build in some kind of flexibility for the owners, though, so that they're not required to do a full-on design review, but have something sort of in between, where it would still come to us, but it would be kind of on the level of a director's exemption in terms of fees and so on.
I was kind of thinking, you don't want to delay, you know, a potential very good tenant coming in because there's this process ahead of them. So, so I'm, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners. Obviously, this, this one in particular, because of its location, I mean, I kind of trust staff on these issues. You kind of know when they're in sensitive areas. What might be good is, for example, a lot of times, actually, and you're seeing it now, commercial tenants will come in towards the end of the year for trying to open up in the, in the March and April months, because that's when the season will kick off for them. So they'll kind of plan around those dates, because that's typically a good income stream time for, for commercial tenants. That's also, by the way, the time that we go dark in December. So what might be nice is to also have some sort of a standing subcommittee that staff could call upon and say, look, this one just came in, they're trying to get this thing done on February first, we're not going to have meetings in December, could the three of you come in, take a quick look at it, you know? And basically, we all understand, we trust the other commissioners to make the decisions for us. And then it gives you some comfort level as well.
So that would forego the need to bring in it before the commission?
Well, and, and the opposite would be true. The three might say, you know what, this is a pretty big deal, let's bring it before the commission, so.
Staff would be very supportive of that. I appreciate that. I think that's, at this time period, and with our codes the way they are currently, and with knowing that you have me for a period of time, but there's going to be someone else new coming on, you know, I think that's, it provides things to have a process to keep going, but we're with, under the umbrella of being per the codes and everything else, but it provides for that flexibility that Commissioner Merk was discussing, too. You know, it, it protects you, it, and it helps the citizens. So I appreciate you even discussing this.
Yeah, I think we're all on board that. Sherry?
Okay, because at the counter, I'm the one that is to tell people, and, and we do. So I just want to get it clear. So if they came in and say it's like this project, were you, would you be comfortable with just asking the chair if he's okay with it, and then we would bring it forward to Planning Commission under the consent calendar at the beginning of the meeting, where it's just, and you, and you've looked at it in your packets ahead of time, and then you can just approve it, like with the minutes? Or, or take it off if you wanted to as well? Or would you prefer at the end, like we did now, it's a discussion when everybody's kind of gone, in the director's report section at the end of our agendas? And same kind of thing, you would just say, it looks good, yes, you can go ahead and approve it. It wouldn't take a real full motion or anything. I like the subcommittee idea with the three, that's good, too. But, or would you, then I guess we'd have to get three people together for it, but that's not as big a deal, I guess. But just asking the chair even, whoever the chair happens to be, if they are good with it, going under that consent item or the director's item?
Mm-hmm.
We could just take it forward pretty easily with a one-page memo with just minor drawings or whatever.
So let's say someone comes in with a, a project on this level here. It would, I think it should, first of all, this is my opinion, go through the senior planner to determine, first of all, where, where, where it lies. And if she determines, or he determines, that this is something that should be reviewed by a, a, a subcommittee with the potential doing that, then, then the committee could take action on that, meet, discuss the project, make some sort of recommendation or determination. I personally like the idea of presenting it at that point, still at the director's level, than making it a formal consent thing, because it then provides for additional feedback, time to answer questions, and that's...
Actually, even at that point, the director or the senior planner, whoever the person may be, could look at it, like this one, and she, and it just looks like it's just so perfect. So it wouldn't really even need to go to the subcommittee, we would just bring it forward, knowing that we can't approve something on the main corridor, or in, you know, the important areas, or commercial zones, or visible from the street. And we would just bring it forward on that without even the subcommittee, and just so you all know and get to see it and look at it. But what end would you want it on? At the beginning end, or the, or the end of the meeting is one of my questions, too.
Sure. Let, and I, I know you're, you're thinking about process. I guess I wasn't thinking about that part, so, I mean, I, we always have to watch out for the brownneck stuff, you know? So like in this case, if this had been emailed to all of us, say, and basically, we, you know, by rotation, I mean, I, I don't mean that you have to have a three-member subcommittee, it could be the chair and the vice chair. Basically, if they're going, yeah, they can talk about it, say, yeah, it's okay with us. If anyone has an objection, any one of us, and says, no, I really want this to come to Planning Commission, that could be enough to put it on a certain part of the agenda? You know what I'm saying?
But don't you want it on the agenda anyway?
Well, yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, you know, there's things that fall into, you know, consent, minor items, and then there's things that probably need to fall into further discussion, I suppose.
That's where we would put it, well, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because Ann brought up the fact that in other cities that she's worked in, they did have the consent calendar, and that's where they brought forward maybe a half a dozen projects that were minor like this.
That was with, it was a specific design review board, it was, it was when I was with Santa Barbara, and they were, they were involved with every aspect of everything, and so...
This was the subcommittee, or the committee?
I, no, I worked directly with, let's see, we did the consent calendar aspects, there were small project signs and other things that went to the chairman of the design review board there.
And that was done prior to the agenda. Then we went to the meeting, and those items were listed, and then if somebody had an issue with one, they'd pull it, but otherwise, they'd accept the chairperson's direction. And you only got in trouble if you, you know, you made that decision on that one and they didn't catch it, but, you know, there is, it was very rare that there was anything that was, you know, significant. But there were a lot more of, of these smaller projects. I, you know, we're, we're having a little rush of them right now, but I think it's like you were saying, it's the end of the year, it's the time of the year, and I thought your points were valid on that.
What, what's the actual ordinance say on it?
The ordinance states, and it's in the staff report...
The ordinance states, and it's in the staff report on the second page, I think it is, hold on one second. Let me find it. Sherry, if you see it before I do, please let me know, I know it's here. Thank you. "Notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the director shall be empowered to exempt from design review by the commission those projects which in his or her opinion are minor in nature, and the review of which by the commission would not serve to carry out the purposes of this article." I think it's, but we have things from planning commissions back in 2006, I believe it was, a policy where they talked about, like the VMU, if it's at the rear. They weren't comfortable at that time with a commercial building that had a corridor, an interior courtyard. They felt that they wanted to be involved in that interior courtyard and things that way. So those were some of the examples we had brought at that time, and there were some concerns as to not, you know, going forward with that. I mean, I think we could, if you're willing, to just allow me to bring these either through a subcommittee of two or three, and then it sounds like if I did a subcommittee on an item or two items, you would still want it to come to a meeting as a part of the agenda, it would come under our director's item? Or do you trust two of the members, and then I go ahead and proceed? I mean, that aspect, we do need to clear up, so that I'm aware.
So if it went on the consent agenda, we would be voting to approve the fact that it's, that it's exempt from design review?
A director's exemption. You'd be supporting a director's exemption.
Right. So we wouldn't be voting on the design or anything?
It wouldn't need the full, it wouldn't need the full design review that needs 300-foot radius and all those other requirements. And another thing, Commissioner Crabtree, that you were asking is what the ordinance states. In the design review ordinance, everything that's zoned, that's non-residentially zoned, VMU, multifamily zones, R2s, R3s, all of them are subject to design review. So then it goes to, again, to Anne, "Would you sign this off?" Well, it's visible from the street, and the commission wants to see it. So $2,500, you're going to change out your window.
I mean, technically, Sherry is giving you the examples that she's experienced at the counter, and under the technical letter of the law, and then how it's been applied through the years, she's correct.
Well, let me give a, let's do a, work through a specific example. This one's a really good one. And if you, you looked at this and you said, "Hey, it's facing the street," but let's make one hypothetical situation here. Let's say we were going dark, and you have this in your hands, but we're not going to be reconvening for 30 days, and you know that this, they're going to get it done, you know, it looked pretty reasonable to you. In other words, there wasn't anything about it that you were going, "Yeah," you know? I would be comfortable if you essentially sent it to the chair and the vice chair and said, "This is what I'm thinking. This one seems like it's just a consent item." And those two said, "Yeah, we agree." If they said, if they both said, "Yes, we agree," then you would send it to me, you'd just send an email to the rest of us, saying, "Here's one that the chair and vice chair said that they want to put on consent for our next meeting, so we're going to go ahead and approve it. It's just going to be like a director's exemption. We've already done it. That's what I'm thinking."
So at that point, everybody's exposed to the idea?
Yeah, and we can't even object to it, because you've already done it. It's a done deal. On the other hand, let's say, same situation, those two looked at it, okay, you immediately sent an email to everyone, and Paul comes back and says, "Hey, wait a minute, I've got a concern on this," and he expresses it to you. Let's say that you've answered it, that's great. But let's say that you're going, "You know what? That's legitimate." Then you run it back through those two, and it either gets worked out or doesn't. Okay? You can't really bring that issue to anybody else, by the way, because there's three involved.
Right, yes.
Right? So that's, that's your limit. But you see what I'm saying? If we set it up as basically two people plus you are saying, "It's a good deal, let's go to consent," that's a no-brainer. The only time it would rise above that, to me, is if, really, if the chair or the vice chair is saying it's need to, it needs to, or if there's a really legitimate concern when that first email goes out, that someone says, "Stop, hold on."
I just have to verify on that email situation, whether we...
Well, I think the key is, if you email everyone, we can only email you or Sherry back. We can't be distributing back to the other commissioners. That would be inappropriate.
Yeah.
But as long as it's just straight back to you.
Okay.
So Troy, what this avoids, this avoids, I mean, the other option is going to keep it on the director's exemption docket, right? Where it's not on the consent calendar, the subcommittee, whoever looks at it, makes a recommendation, is of approval at the end of our, towards the end of the meeting, and whoever says, "This is, this is the item that we're looking at, it was approved by the subcommittee." You guys, at that point in time, get an opportunity to take a look at it and comment, if you wish, or...
Right then and there, you know, just basically right away.
And I think the email situation would be the rare...
I'm trying to look for the cleaner, whatever's cleaner, you know?
I think, I think the email aspect, I think going to the two is clear. Then I, then I have direction to go back to the applicant and tell them, "No, you're going to need to file for a design review, a full design review. If I get a pretty good reading from them, that's it, and I'm already hesitant." Second case would be, they say, "Yeah, that looks good." I put it on the next agenda. It's those rare cases where, for some reason, something's triggered, there's a workshop or something, and you're not having the full meetings. Maybe that's when we play in these other things. I would, I would try to just keep it pretty clean. And I think it's going to be rare. I'm hoping it's going to be rare, but I can't promise.
So Anne, in your opinion, as an administrator, do you think it serves purpose to be better, more purpose to be on the consent calendar, or on the, keep it on the director's exemption?
I think under the directors, I think we can handle it that way. I think it keeps it per the ordinance code, it's directors, I'm just asking for a discussion item with you guys. You know, there's nothing in the ordinance that says I can't come to you and ask for your opinion, because I appreciate your opinion. So we'll go with that. I'd be very comfortable with that, and trying it for the next couple of months and see whether it works. There's going to be oddball cases, I'm sure, but...
That sounds great to me. But one last note, though, is what you think about this, because we have to get back to the applicant for that tomorrow.
Okay. So, John, you look like you're ready to speak up on the...
I'll go after you.
This is interesting, because in this particular case...
In this particular case?
I like what they're proposing, and I don't have a problem with allowing it to go forward, but I would hate to say this sets a precedent for everybody else. It's just, it's a really unique kind of situation. I can't remember any other time when we've had a, I mean, all those buildings downtown are pretty much fixed in place. It's the first time anybody's ever really proposed remodeling something down there, so...
The Arcade is a historic landmark and is always subject to design review by a historic preservation commission.
I have a comment. It's not that I'm so opposed to this, but what I've noticed in several buildings downtown is where certain architectural elements are duplicated, and they kind of lose their, I'm not sure what the word is, that I want. For instance, there's several buildings that have the Taco Bell look, and it just repeats itself too much, and I feel like it kind of dilutes the architecture. So, I mean, I look at this and it's like, okay, but why duplicate the building down at the end, when everything else is, you know, so different and unique? So I'm, I'm not sure that I, that I'm in agreement on it, but I'll think about it for a minute.
I mean, I have questions about this one. My first question is, I'm always sort of wary if someone won't sign their drawing, like who, like who drew it, and what are their qualifications? The other is, it's, it appears that, you know, the bay windows with the stone, and then it, I'm thinking there might be a mixture of styles going on here. And on the other, then the other thing is, the materials and colors aren't really called out on the drawing. But on the other hand, you'd like to see that, that little thing, you know? It is all high funky, you know, but it'd be nice to, if, you know, if the owner or whoever's doing it would like to upgrade it or something, without having to pay $2,500, is like, geez.
Eight weeks.
And the time.
I can tell you who submitted the application materials is Andrew Stasi. The property owner, as stated in the report, is Barbara Bowman, and we had another question, and I lost it. Oh, the materials. They are matching the general coloring, I think is what they've stated on there, of the surrounding buildings. The plaster color, yes.
Plaster shall maintain theme criteria?
And that's based on the downtown redevelopment statement of theme.
But is this EPIS or plaster?
I'm not positive of that. I think that...
It's just plaster?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think there was a, a note on that.
I mean, Steve, you would, you would know better, but...
I think there's a, I think in a perfect world...
I would, you know, one of the things, my first question was, we have lines drawn on this, and there's no sense of relief or depth to it, and I'm thinking, this thing's screaming for some relief, you know? If you can take those columns and pop them out a couple inches, versus keeping everything plainer, which I believe is the intent, except for at the very top cap of it, it would show, it'd be another level of design of improvement. And I think the justification for doing it this way was the fact that they're mirroring the cleaners on the end of the street there, which is plainer in nature, but it's a different building. So that's something that has to be reconciled. Also, you bring up a point, you know, I mean, you're, you have this pebbly rock-looking veneer going on in front of the bay windows, and it's sort of, you know, it's missing some consistency, lacking some consistency.
Provincial.
I'm not quite sure. But at the same token, it probably looks better this way than it does now, so how do we weigh that, justify that?
Well, I like the roof line, and I like the way they tied it in with the other buildings. The stones are presently there, aren't they? Yeah, so it's really a minor, it looks to me like a minor modification.
Well, I think it's a minor modification, but I don't think it's architecturally compatible. I'm not even so sure why they're doing it, but we don't get that information.
I'm kind of, it's a tough one. I'm okay with it, but I, this would be one where I'd be okay with a director's exemption if they sat down with, you know, Steve, and maybe, you know, incorporated some of those simple ideas about depth. I mean, depth, you, it looks like they are trying to, you just can't see it here. And then maybe you could also convince them to wrap it around that one corner, so you don't have to see the air conditioners and stuff, and the swamp cooler on the side for when you walk by that creek. So, you know, for me, it's kind of like, it's definitely improvement. It does look a little different.
This actually says, "The new trim shall match the existing trim," so that's a blue line going up there?
Paul, he indicated that he would be changing the color, but he did not submit what's one here.
Oh, so that's what those lines are. That's new trim, that's extending up, but it's not, the rectangle that sits above the...
That's what it says.
Right, yeah. New trim shall match exist, so it's, you know, Paul, you're right, they would assume that that would be blue trim, right? But it's just not drawn that way.
So Sherry, HPC doesn't have any purview over this particular side, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
This is not a designated historical building or anything like that?
No.
We could try the two committee members and see whether we can get more details and flush it out, and see whether we can come up with something. I would, I know that they are interested in opening, and so I guess I just want direction from the full commission as to if the two committee members are willing to sign off on it, then do you want it to come back December 7th, or do you want me to go ahead with it? If they've...
Well, I think the fact that we had the full planning commission looking at it right now is, I mean, what do you guys think? Do you think that we need to spend more time at this as a subcommittee?
I'm okay if you've guys, if you can flush it out with Anne, I really am. I think, you know, work it out with Andrew Stasi and whoever. I mean, that's just my opinion. If you come up with something everyone's, you're comfortable with, it's fine with me. I do see it as an improvement to the building.
I'm going to pipe up, and I'm not sure that I have the time to commit to be on another subcommittee.
Really?
Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
Your plane is very full, yes.
And I know that I'm the co-chair, but, Sharon, but I've got to be really, real realistic.
And John, your availability is...
It's limited.
It's limited, yeah.
Right.
So it leaves, it leaves the four of you.
Well, Lawrence isn't on one.
Think we should volunteer Lawrence?
I'm just kidding. I, to me, it's, you know, it's really, I don't think it always, I think the chair, if they can be involved, is always a good idea on these things. But I, I think, you know, it's, it doesn't really matter. Whoever can do it is great. I mean, I trust, I think you all are great, so I completely trust whoever's ready to do it.
All right, well, Lawrence?
You know, I'd be happy to help some...
Join in the conversation?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Got that slip by? I'm not even on a subcommittee.
All right. You're trying.
Should have said it, Lawrence.
You know, I kind of agree with Steve about having some relief on this, it would look nice, you know, this is not very clear about what's going on in front here. You know, nice, you know, for the pillars to stand out a little bit, and...
All right, so let's, let's do that, Anne.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll be with you.
I'll coordinate it, and we'll be in touch, Sherry and I'll be in touch. Thank you very much.
Hey, let's see, are there further director...
They were listening here on notebook for section seven, just for information.
Okay, we can look at that. And then we want to proceed to final action, and that would be planning commission's subcommittee reports. Did you want to, do you have anything to report, Kathy?
I'm going to be very brief. You know, I had these great notes from today, and I realized I unloaded them in my car when I brought all this stuff back, but I'm, I'm just going to give the encapsulated version. Let's see, well, I did present to city council several weeks ago, and it went over quite well. And as a matter of fact, they agreed to allot funds for the GIS, I guess I would call it software purchase, or software upgrade and training, so that we can hopefully soon start inputting all of our data that we're collecting. And, and the value is not just for complete streets, but the city will be able to use it across the board for a lot of things. I think it's going to be a very good tool for the city. And we've finished up our scoring for the pedestrian enhancement district, and we came up with a D. up with a D score for our walkability, which is very, very poor, so we're going to have a lot of opportunity to make some good changes. And so presently, our new focus is going to be on doing the walkability index sheets for highways 150 and Highway 33, and we are proposing to have that completed by December 7th, which is our next meeting. And let's see, what else? Oh, we're continuing to work on safer routes to school. Actually, Commissioner Luckman provided, I'll call it the first layer at this point, a map with some of the streets defined. We've got a ways to go, but it's a good start. And we're continuing with publicity in the paper. Commissioner Luckman is, looks like going to be putting two articles in, in the paper. And then we also discussed the Fulton Street project today at our commission, our subcommittee meeting, and we will be consulting with our Public Works Director, Greg Grant, to find out what the parameter is and see how we want to proceed or not, depending on what is discussed at that meeting. I think generally that's it. If any other members want to pipe in on something, otherwise, I wanted to mention that we do meet twice a month, first and third Wednesdays of the month, 3:30 to 5:00 here at City Hall, and it's open to the public. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
City Council member, Struggles, here.
Yes.
She endured the last four and a half hours rather well, I think.
I'll be very brief. The, I really appreciated the getting together with all of the commissions and the city council. We're going to have to do that on a regular basis. I think it was not only good for the council to hear just the Planning Commission, but it was good for the different commissions. So I really appreciate that. That was very informative for me and very important, so thank you. And I really enjoyed the first half of the meeting tonight, just the idea that, you know, the bicycles and the tennis, it's like, this is really a neat town. This is really, so anyway, thank you for all your work. It's very late. If you have any specific questions, the council has been working recently on, I would say goals, but that's not exactly correct. It's more, we've been looking into what are some of the things we can be doing better? And your comments were very helpful in that, because it's one thing to have goals out there in the future, but it's just as important to be objective about what you're doing right now, right this moment, and see what can be made better, more efficient. I didn't intend to give you a speech. Anyone have any questions of me? Okay.
Thank you, Carl. This meeting is adjourned. So soon.